Good evening. My name is Nate Rudy. It's my honor and privilege to serve as Gray's Town Manager. For this evening's meeting, I will conduct the first few items of business until new council officers are elected. I'd like to start with a roll call. Councilor Meany?
Present.
Councilor Chapel?
Present.
Councilor Height?
Present.
Councilor McGuire?
Present.
Thank you. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic who represents one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for nominations for the Chair of the Town Council.
I would like to nominate Krista as our Chair for the Council.
Second?
Any other nominations for the Chair? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Councilor Height?
Favor.
Councilor Meany?
Yes.
Councilor Chapel?
Yes.
Councilor McGuire?
Yes, I'm glad you said yes, Krista.
Thank you. Thank you all for your confidence. I will do my best.
May I also ask for nomination for the Vice Chair?
I nominate Dan McGuire.
Second?
Any other nominations? Hearing none, take a roll call vote. Councilor Height?
Yes.
Councilor Meany?
Yes.
Councilor Chapel?
Yes.
Councilor McGuire?
Yes.
Dramatic pause.
Thank you all. I will relinquish the meeting to Councilor Chapel. Thank you.
Thank you all. It's an honor to be elected Chair, so I appreciate everyone's confidence in me. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any edits to any of the content here? I know it's just the one thing. No?
Nope.
Okay. So I'm just looking for a vote. Councilor Height?
Yes.
You could abstain if you had.
Yeah, I think that would make more sense.
Councilor Meany?
Yes.
Councilor McGuire?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next up is public comments of non-agenda items. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone here for a public comment? If you could just sign in and then just give us your name and address.
I'm gonna peel these off because we get enough of them in the mail. I'll put it to you. My name's Colette Tweetin. I live on Mayberry Road and I'm here to see if I can get an answer to a noise complaint I made last week regarding construction start time at 5:00 AM.
Yes, we did receive your email. I was looking into the ordinances and had referred it to.
Yeah, because I was told there is no noise ordinance on the books and I just couldn't believe there's none. You know, that's ridiculous.
I'm not familiar with the specifics of it, but I believe there is an ordinance that governs that.
For the gravel pits?
Yeah.
Not for housing construction. They've been starting at 7:00 AM, 6:00 AM, and last Thursday morning, 5:00 AM.
I have referred the matter to the code officer today and she said she was gonna follow up on it.
Okay, I would have appreciated, you know, a call back or something to say that, you know, it was being looked into, but I hadn't heard anything because I did, I came in personally and I left a message for you, Rudy, and I also emailed, you know, the Town Council and I hadn't heard anything. So that's why I came here to follow up in person.
Yeah, I'm sorry you had to do that. We've had some transition on council.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but, you know, fortunately, there was no construction yesterday because it was a holiday. Today, they started at 7:00. So, you know, maybe the property owner could have been contacted and just told personally to let her guys know that it would be reasonable to limit the start time to 8:00, nothing before 8:00 AM, until there's something official on the books.
Right, okay. Yeah, we appreciate you letting us know about that that's a problem and we will certainly look into it. And it sounds like the code enforcement officer will be following up.
Yeah, because, I mean, 5:00 AM, that's out of the question, you know.
I just got a.
Pouring concrete and putting molds on, that's, you know. And next, when they go to framing, that's gonna be pounding and bending all day, so.
I just got a note from one of my coworkers that the CEO emailed the property owner and they're going to stop working prior to 6:00 AM going forward.
Six?
6:00 AM. So we'll look into.
That means they can still start at 6:00 AM. That's still unreasonable. I mean, they shouldn't be starting before 8:00. I mean, I checked, Gloucester is 8:00 AM. I mean, it just seems reasonable that people shouldn't have to be awakened at 5:00 AM or even 7:00 AM.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you and I appreciate you letting us know. We will certainly follow up as, looking at our ordinances.
Yeah, I mean, you know, 8:00 seems reasonable. Prior to that, that's just a total disregard for anybody's, you know, well-being or anything.
Yeah, we don't usually comment, but I want to tell you, in six years on the council, you're the first person who's come forward with this complaint. So, you know, we depend, no, no, just let me finish. We depend on folks to be reasonable, but unfortunately, sometimes there aren't. A lot of times, a simple conversation is all it takes to get it going. Six and seven, eight, the difference between 7:00 and 8:00 AM, that's a tough call. I can appreciate the fact that people would like it to be 8:00 AM.
Yeah, but I mean, like it was just said, nothing before 6:00, so that means they could still start at 6:00.
Yep, yep. I think, you know, unfortunately, construction folks are sort of like farmers. They make hay when the sun shines, but I understand there needs to be some compromise.
Yeah, I mean, and under this circumstance, they were working in an eight, quarter to eight. They took off and they went to a job where they couldn't start before 8:00 AM. You know, they were there at 5:00 and worked until quarter of eight and then vacated and no one was there.
For the rest of the day?
Until around 10:00.
Interesting. Now, thank you for that little bit of information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments? Lisa, would you like to come up? I know we, yeah, we kind of chatted earlier. I don't want you to have to sit through our whole meeting.
It's past my bedtime. They can wake me up if I. Yeah, I'm here because we're trying to figure out what's gonna happen Saturday.
Oh, sorry, could you just introduce yourself?
Oh, my name's Lisa Elena Gilmore. And I'm chairing the Gray Community Day on Saturday.
Thank you. So Nate, it's my understanding we are lacking staff coverage for Saturday for any kind of setup or support. Lisa, we just needed to understand from you how that was gonna impact your ability to, you know, function on Saturday, so.
Well, I'm meeting with Mo on Thursday at 10:00 AM. Nate just informed me that Mo said that tables and chairs will be accessible. I don't know where they are or how.
Yeah, I was talking to Anthony. He mentioned that he had coordinated with you on some stuff. I'm not, I presume that that was the chairs and tables, but we should try to work that out on Thursday.
Yeah.
Make sure you know what's available and how to access it.
Do we have, or do you rather have volunteers that might be able to help with setup?
I have very few. I'm gonna make my son come out. And there's only one other woman working on this with me.
Yeah, I can come out early to help set up also.
Yeah, what time do you need help, yeah? Like I could be there Saturday morning.
Well, I'm not real sure. I'm planning on being here by 8:00. What I don't know is what time the award ceremony is gonna be.
Well, I actually wanted to pose a question to the council because I think there was some uncertainty around the start time for a while as we were transitioning officers on the council and I think emails. I'll just admit, I didn't know that that was my decision to make. So the invitations have not gone out to volunteer awards recipients? And it's, what, four days, four or five days away? I'm thinking we might want to postpone that part of the event just to give people a better chance to participate that we're trying to honor and thank. So I'm just wondering if others might feel the same way about that aspect or.
Yeah, it is kind of short notice for them and I hear there's a lot of things going on this weekend.
Right, there are a lot of things going on, that's for sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, under the circumstances, Krista, I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm not quite sure what Plan B will be, but hopefully going forward, we can.
Right, I mean, we were trying to get away from using the Blueberry Festival, which we've done the last two years, but given the circumstances, we might want to move forward with that again this year.
Yep. Four days, yeah, just isn't enough.
It's just not enough time. They're not gonna be able to really have family or friends attend, or even themselves potentially. I know I probably wouldn't with that amount of notice, so. Do others?
Yes, I do.
We can revisit how or if the Blueberry Festival is appropriate. But yeah, I think for Saturday, we need to at least just postpone the volunteer portion. Yeah, and then several of us could be available if you just want to email us what you need and when you need us to be there. What else, so tables and chairs, do you need tents or how is that, what kind of, I don't know what we have.
Well, if people have tents, they're gonna bring them. I have one. I'm gonna bring, you know, any tents are welcome. They've set up the camp tents a little early for us. I guess they weren't gonna do it till next week or something.
Okay, yeah, the ones for the rec program? Yeah, I noticed that.
So there they are. And I just don't know where things are and how to get to them, and so I'm gonna straighten that out with Mo. We need extension cord and how to cover that.
Okay. If we eliminate the volunteer ceremony, you wouldn't, I would imagine you don't need a PA system any longer, or do you feel like you need one?
The band we're having is also gonna be our emcee and he's gonna use his equipment, so that's covered. I just didn't know.
Where are you plugging in?
Okay.
Yeah, Mo went over how to plug that in. That's why we need the extension cord and the.
Okay, you said you're meeting on Thursday?
Thursday 10.
Yeah, I was gonna say I could go, but I can't go to that. Can anyone, do you need council support on Thursday or do you? Nate, I don't know. She's meeting with Mo on Thursday morning at 10:00 AM.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
I don't think it would hurt.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. If you can attend, Marty, that would be great.
Where's the meeting on the basis? Here?
Yes.
And then you're gonna, you're gonna kick off 8:00 AM is when you're gonna start to?
I'm gonna be here at 8:00 AM.
Okay, so I can be here at 8:00.
Yeah.
And I've asked, like, the people bringing chili to set up between 9:30 and 10:00. And we have 11 booths, so we'll have those tables set up.
Are those mostly council committees or are there other people trying to set up?
There's the Lions Club, the American Legion, United Retired Women.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's great.
What time was it, 10:00?
10:00 is when it starts.
Okay. I mean, for Thursday?
Oh, yes, Thursday's 10 o'clock too.
Are you meeting with Mo in person or Zoom or?
In person.
In person, okay. Yeah, if you could just let Marty know the details of where exactly. I don't know if you're meeting in Mo's office or, you know.
Actually, we didn't discuss that. We just said tents.
Meet at the front door?
I just come here all the time.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out and please, yeah, just be in touch if you need us. Marty will come on Thursday, but if you need any, and we'll, some of us will plan to attend on Saturday morning to help.
Okay, I think one of my only concerns is that we have the Little League porta potty. And I haven't been in it yet, but it's been used all summer, so. But I understand that the building's gonna be closed, so I don't know. I'm a little concerned about that.
Okay. Do you have suggestions around that or?
Just, I will ask Mo if he has any thoughts.
Okay, yeah. We'll have to talk about it on Thursday.
Yeah, that might be kind of late, actually, if we're gonna have some delivered this week for.
Well, the Blueberry Festival, the town office is open, right? If one of us is here, can we?
I would feel comfortable if, I'd have to check with Mo, but if a council member's gonna be present, that opens up some possibilities.
Okay, yeah. We have, we have access to the building if necessary, so we might be able to.
Okay.
We'll work that out.
All right. I guess that, I guess that's it. I have some copy and then I'm gonna bring it on Thursday to get done for the ballots for the chili contest and there's a scavenger hunt.
Who on staff would need to be present for her to make copies?
On Thursday, the clerk's office should be able to help you.
All right. Okay, that's it. Everybody's been really helpful because this is my first rodeo and I don't know what I'm doing.
Well, I've seen a lot of excitement around it and I've seen your flyers all over town, so you've been doing a wonderful job spreading the message. I hope you, we have a good turnout, so.
Yeah, we don't know if, we're expecting 50 or 200 or whatever. We'll see.
Thank you for your efforts, though.
There's still opening for chili if anybody's cooking. Okay, thank you.
I don't think my recipe would compete with anything that shows up on Saturday.
Mine's out of the Betty Crocker cookbook, so.
Not known for my hot sauce.
Thank you, Lisa. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda? Next up is action items. Looking for a motion to review and act upon selecting an interim counselor to fill a vacancy on the Town Council for the Town of Gray Town Charter, Article II, Section 5 vacancies. The Town Council shall select an interim counselor to serve until the next annual municipal election. The interim counselor shall serve until a successor is elected to fill the unexpired term. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I just, I just want to give a little explanation about why we have a vacancy. For those that don't know, former Counselor Curtis had to resign late this spring due to some family and work conflicts that he was experiencing. And unfortunately, we didn't, he wasn't able to resign in time to have this appear on the ballot. So the person we select tonight as an appointed term will have one year on the term. And then, as it noted, the seat will open up again for an election next June for our annual municipal election to fill the remaining one year of that term. Nate, do we, I think in our packet we had one applicant.
We had one applicant who returned material and the applicant, Ann Gass is here this evening.
Does anyone have any comments or questions or we could ask Ann to come up? Yep.
Yeah, I think, well, I think it would be important to give you a chance. I just want to start by saying two things. One, thank you very much. And, you know, I have to say, it's a little disheartening. Not only did I get elected by voting for myself, but we only have, we only have one application for someone to serve a one-year term. Folks, if anybody was thinking about doing community service by joining the council, a one-year term is the easiest way to dip your toe in the water. So that opportunity will come up again next June when we have our next municipal meeting. Unfortunately, the way our charter is set up, it has to be a municipal meeting, so we can't fill the position in November. So it's one of the reasons why it goes the whole year. And why I think we are all disappointed that the voters didn't get a chance to fill a two-year council position instead of just the one. But I do want to make those a couple of comments and thank Ann for applying.
Anyone else like to speak on? Ann, would you like to come up to the podium?
Hi, I'm Ann Gass and I'm, I guess, the sole applicant for the vacancy on the council. I have, I served a previous term on the council that ended in June of '22. And, you know, I, since I moved to Gray, I've been very involved with the community in one way, shape, or form. I take the work very seriously. I really value the opportunity to work with other people in Gray and, you know, try to move things forward, so I'm looking forward to this opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Ann. I certainly can vouch for your competency on the council and your reliability, so I'd be certainly more than happy to have you join us up here.
Yeah, we're fortunate that you threw your hat into the ring again. Appreciate that.
Okay, I forget who made the motion.
Councilor McGuire.
McGuire, okay. Dan, would you like to amend your motion to have Ann Gass fill the vacancy on the council and serve as interim counselor until the next annual municipal election?
Yes.
Okay, let's have a vote. Matthew?
Should the second be?
We already, we, right?
Yeah, the council can amend. Probably should ask Marty if he's okay with amending.
Oh, that's right. Are you okay with the amendment, Marty? Yes, thank you. I'm gonna need some coaching here.
It's a team effort.
Okay, yes, Matthew? Okay, Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. So, Ann, we have to have you sworn in before you can join us up here. But if you wouldn't mind sticking around for the portion for, when are we talking about that? Our council liaison assignments, it's item number eight, so. Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I want you to have an opportunity to weigh in if you have preferences. Okay, next up is to authorize the Town Manager to negotiate agreements for paving. Do I have a motion to, for the Gray Town Council to authorize the Town Manager to negotiate agreements? Oh, I should wait to read this because it's not.
Yeah, you can just say negotiate agreements for paving and just leave it.
Yeah, to negotiate agreements for paving as we're going to discuss.
So moved. Second.
I believe we had a memo from Tim Estes, our Public Works Director. Tim, yeah, if you want to just come up and give us a quick overview of the paving.
Hi, I'm Tim Estes, the interim Public Works Director. And we had a bid opening on the 31st of May. We had we had nine companies bid and the cheapest bid came in at Glidden Paving at $88.30 a ton, which is almost $7 cheaper than we've paid per ton for the past two years. So I expected it to go the other way, but it didn't, which I'm thankful. So I would recommend that the bid go to Glidden Paving.
Okay. Marty, are you okay with amending that for Glidden Paving? And Matthew?
Yes.
I'm gonna take a vote. Dan?
Can we, some comments?
Yes, sorry, my apologies.
Just some news, I just wanted to relay a little bit more information. The highest bid was $99 a ton, I think.
Correct, from Dayton City and the Red.
And we've had Glidden Paving pave for us in the past.
Correct.
And we've been happy with their work.
Correct.
So we're fortunate that we have the stars have aligned on both of those counts. I was really surprised that the price was what it is, not that I'm complaining at all. Does, do you expect to be able to do more than what was originally thought of on our list?
Depending if the CIP budget passes, we can. Because I had some money that I forwarded from FY23 for paving as well. So we can probably do at least another two roads.
That would be great.
That's great.
It is, it's excellent news, so.
And I did speak with, I spoke with Glidden Paving to see how busy they were this summer and they are fairly busy, so we may run into the getting them paved in the spring. We may get some paved this fall, but get the rest of them in the springtime. The only other thing is, is we have to get those other two roads ready. And depending on what they need, I haven't really looked to see which other two we could tackle. But that, that takes time, you know, going up and down each road, both sides, doing the ditches, changing culbys that need to be changed, so we'll do the best we can.
Oh, I'm sure you will. You have, there, we've seen it before. There's a list of all our roads.
Yes.
Sort of the order of that. Can you circulate that to us?
I can, I believe I gave you, you should have a list for each year for the next seven to eight years.
I think it's in the capital improvement.
Was it in the capital improvement? I'll look for that.
Steve LaValle and myself just did that like two, two months ago.
I'll look for that. Thank you.
And we'll end up picking a couple of roads off, off next year's list.
So would this contract be valid in the springtime if you were able to pave then? And because if you had all this additional work for prepping?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So if I could just ask you to clarify, the amended motion is the council authorizes the Town Manager to negotiate agreements for paving with Glidden Paving for a cost not to exceed
No, that would be, that would be $552,000 because we do all the handwork ourselves.
You're doing the handwork?
Yes.
Five hundred fifty.
That actually saves us a lot of money.
Sure thing. $552,300.
Which is a savings of about $20,000 because our public works folks do that handwork.
That's great. Marty, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next up is to authorize the Town Manager to negotiate agreements for road salt. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll give that to Matthew. Okay, I think we go, we use, we get our road salt bids through GP COG, is that correct? And they had two bidders according to the packet?
And I know the council agenda says that comes out of CIP. That comes out of operations.
That was my mistake. It'll come out of the general fund, not the capital improvement fund. I was transcribing. I cut and pasted without judiciousness.
Oh, that's right, and it does come out of the.
Same thing.
Makes sense because it's an expendable yearly expense.
Same thing for line striping. Has to be done every year or so.
Okay, so it comes out of what, I'm sorry, what?
General fund.
General fund.
And, I'm sorry, do you have an amount?
For, for the salt?
Yeah.
Yes.
And for the line striping?
Yeah, I don't have the, I have what they charge per, per a linear foot. No, we don't have the total because the prices have almost doubled and with my budget, I believe my budget is $90,300 for striping. And that's not even enough to do the whole town plus all the handwork that needs to be done in the village now.
So I might suggest the council say a cost not to exceed the amount budgeted in the general fund.
Yeah, it's $90,300 is what I have.
Well, that's assuming that the budget that's proposed passes.
It was the same as last year, so.
That's for the road salt bid because he just said.
For both road salt and line striping.
Actually, road salt is a separate line.
I understand. I'm just, I'm saying for these two motions, since we don't have an amount, we're gonna say for a cost not to exceed the amount budgeted in the, you know, the town's operating budget.
Yes.
For FY24, right.
Okay, yeah, comments?
So, I, actually, given the motion that we just agreed upon, which was in amount not to exceed, what's an FY24 budget works for me? Because I feel like we need to hear more about the fact that we're not even gonna pay, we're not even gonna stripe everything that we currently have with what we were planning in the previous budget, so. Lord knows, we're not looking to make the budget more expensive than the one we sent to the voters, but we're gonna have to, I think, at least have a conversation around that to see if we can help.
That's, line striping's almost, it's almost doubled since COVID started. When they had the paint shortage during COVID and plus they had, they had a big freeze in Texas and that's what, that's what really messed everything up.
Yeah, you can get white but not yellow.
What's the amount for salt you're, you have it there?
It looks like the price per ton for, are we having it delivered or picked up?
No, we have that delivered.
Delivered, so it's $73.73 per ton.
This is one of the advantages for us that we get from being a part of GP COG. It allows us to pool our, our bids with other communities to keep the price as low as we can find. There are some years where we go with their bid and some years where we don't, but for the most part, it always works out in our favor for salt and striping. But we're just talking about salt now.
Right.
Should mix them up.
Any other comments about the salt bid? Matthew, are you okay with amending the motion to include Morton's salt and not to exceed an amount budgeted in town, in the town's FY24 operating budget?
Yes.
Marty, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Next up, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate agreements for line striping. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any other comments beyond what we just discussed? Dan?
Uh, yeah, um, just really quickly, have we used KNS before for striping?
No, they were, they were the low bid through GP COG.
Okay.
And we only went, we, we're only gonna go, went one year with them on the one-year prices instead of the three-year prices, because we've done the three-year prices, and the company that comes in and paints the first time did not do the greatest job, so.
Well, we recently had a, a, a situation where Alec actually fired the group that.
Correct, and that's actually what I'm referring to.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that these weren't those guys.
We'll find out.
Do we, do you have any recommendations or any feedback about the quality of their work?
I have not got anything, no.
Do you get alerted when they come to town to start?
I called them, and of course, the way, the way the weather's been, they said they could be here mid-Ju- July, but I can almost guarantee you it's gonna be later than that.
But we'll, but you'll be there?
I will be notified.
See their work, so that if we start to get down the wrong road, we can stop, but.
Yes.
Okay, good.
The MDOT takes care of, like Route twenty-six and strip, no, do we do that? Okay, so they'll, they'll be managing that?
Because if, if you notice, from the turnpike to the public works garage, you can barely see the line, because they did not, because they did not even paint, they didn't paint it last year. So that's why, that's, I mean, that's, that's tough for me, because I plow that road in the wintertime, and you like to set your blade on the LLI, but when you can't see it, you don't know where the center of the road is, so you just do the best you can.
So, but we're, but we'll be striping that this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Most definitely. Those will be the first, the first roads done, I hope.
The benefit, I'm not sure that's the right word, of the urban compact agreement and the way that process works with the state. Because I don't think what we get from them covers our costs for, for all of these issues, especially given the way prices have increased.
Last year, I, I looked it up last week, last year, all the handwork that's done, like in the village, now by the turnpike, all the arrows, stop lines, you know, the, the maroon crosswalks, and it was around twenty-four thousand dollars. So the rest of that, of that, that budget line goes towards, towards all the lines.
The council has been contemplating making some like temporary changes in the village to kind of do some experiments with like pop-up type food truck events or different walkability, you know, creating areas that are, improve the walkability, but they would be temporary? Is that something that this company would do, or would we just work with your department to get that done?
Probably just, just work with me and then we could get it done.
Okay.
There are temporary things that we can do, yeah.
Because there's temporary paint and things, yeah.
They're, they're, they're very hard to get here, to get them started. Once they get started, we're, we're good, but it's hard to get them here.
Yeah, and just so people know, I mean, for, you know, one bike lane symbol is forty-five bucks. The same goes with the handicap parking symbols. The directional arrows are thirty bucks apiece. It's, it's an expensive proposition, so the more we do as far as striping, that's, that's just gonna be an additional cost. Originally, several years ago, in the council, we had decided that we needed to stripe the village and the high-traffic areas twice a year, because they were worn off before the year was half over.
In the past five years, that budget went up to ninety thousand three hundred, but now the price of paint has doubled, so that, I, I can't even pave, I mean, I can't even stripe all the roads I have for one time, never mind twice.
So that, I just wanted to be clear that our effort to try and do some of those areas twice a year has just been eaten up by the, the cost increase for trying to do the whole town once.
Yeah, that's a shame. I, I mean, we can't control the cost of the market, but.
I don't see us being able to get back to doing the portions of town more than once for a while myself. I just don't see us having the money to do that.
Given the difficulties we had even before the paint factory froze in Texas, I agree. It's just, it's untenable. The, we're behind on line striping at major intersections now, and, you know, we, we wanna get on top of that when we can, but the, the, the service provider market is just not there.
No, it's, it's very hard, very hard to find. It, it, there's only like two or three in this, in the whole state, so.
Yeah, and everyone's doing infrastructure projects right now, which require additional line striping among other things.
When we, when we do things, when you look down the long list of their offerings as far as crosswalks and railroad crossings and all the rest of it, are there degrees of quality in their offering, or is it just kind of one size takes all? I guess my question is, is there a, a probably more expensive, but a higher quality way to go about painting, or is it just?
All of it's basically the same. I mean, you'll see, you go from one town to the next, and you may see that the yellow color is a little different, but it's all basically the same price.
So there really aren't other products that might have more longevity that could be used?
Not that I know of.
Okay, just, I mean, figured it was worth that.
It's possible, but I am very unaware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other stuff? Yeah, go ahead, Matthew.
A question on the proposed motion that refers to the capital improvement budget also, is that also from the general fund?
Oh, yes, yeah, we need to change that to general fund also.
So the revised motion would be ordered, the Gray Town Council authorizes the town manager to negotiate agreements for line striping with KS Corporation for a cost not to exceed the FY twenty-four operating budget to be paid for from the general fund.
Are you okay with that amendment, Marty? That's right, it does say paving and they're not line striping, so, yeah.
That's a copy of the one.
Yeah. Okay, Matthew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. We just need to get the budget, the budget approved. Okay, I think that's it, Tim, unless you had any questions?
I do, I, just to let you know, I did order the signs for Short Shaker Road.
Okay.
It's gonna take two to three weeks, because they have to be custom-made, it's nothing that they had in stock, so it'll be at least two, two to three weeks before they even come in.
Okay, did you have any thoughts about adding a sign over on, before people turn onto Short Mail Road, because there were some?
We actually went and moved that sign.
Oh, you moved it? Oh, that's great, that's wonderful.
Yeah, actually, I think Nate got ahold of me the, the following day, and, and we, we went and moved it, so they can see it before they turn.
That's awesome, okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night, Jim.
Okay, next up, to review and act upon reaffirming the rules for town council meetings and workshops. They were included in the packet.
Page twenty-five. Uh, there's a revised version of your rules that's not in the packet that includes your decorum policy, I believe, or is that a?
No, this one, I believe, includes our, the decorum edits that we had before. Anyway, we, let's talk about it in a sec. Do I have a motion on the floor, so we can talk about it?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so, yeah, so I, we did amend our, back in December, we amended our, our council rules by incorporating the decorum and order policy into them, and then we were eliminating the decorum and order policy because it was redundant. I believe this version has those edits for the most part. One thing I did notice that was not included in here unrelated to decorum was in the first section, six oh two dot oh one under regular meeting. I believe we had amended that to include the option to have hybrid meetings.
Yes, we have.
Right, and that is not in this version.
Yeah. I have a, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone else noticed any other missing edits or things we might need to change, regardless of whether they were changed before.
No, I, I noticed that too.
The hybrid portion?
Yeah, it says, it sort of mandates that we all be in person. Do we, do we need a motion on that, or?
I'm not sure.
No, well.
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe you made that edit, so we just need to find the.
The version?
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely had a version that outlined our hybrid policy, and that's not in this one. Dan, did you have?
Just a point of information from Matthew. Usually what we'll do is we'll have the discussion, and then as the discussion proceeds, if something happens that requires us to amend the motion, then we can, then we will do that. I think we, I guess my other question was, I don't think that there's any thing that prevents us from tabling this either until our next meeting, which I have some other things I wanna talk about, so I might be making a motion to.
Right, and I, I, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Nate, but I believe if we, if we make any changes to the council rules, we need four votes for it to pass, not three?
After the first time.
After the first time?
Yeah, I believe so. That's my understanding. I would wanna double-check that, but I think we have kind of one crack at it each year. Each council has one turn of that, but then if we wanna make changes within, after that fact, we need four counselors to agree.
Okay, thank you for helping me clarify that.
That would be the rationale for tabling.
Yes, yeah.
So, Dan, you said you had some other thoughts?
I do. I would like to research five A on, on packet page twenty-seven, which is the, the question about the hybrid, to see if I can find the language that we agreed upon. I also would like to add a, a, a number six to section six oh two dot oh one, A six, that would say, for any topic under discussion by the counselor, a counselor may request time be allowed for public comment before the council moves on to other business. What, one of the reasons why I propose this is because it feels, it feels, it's always felt, but this past year especially, it's felt that there have been frequently instances when we've had people in attendance, we've had a chance to discuss it, but we haven't had, but we haven't allowed any way for us to get feedback from people within our rules. And it puts them off until the next meeting, where they have to email us, or they have to call us later. Where I think that, you know, we can set a time limit for these comments. And I just think it's, I mean, when people come to see us, or to come to the meeting, I just think we wanna hear what they have to say. And so I think that adding this to, to A six, it would, you know, so for any topic under discussion by the council, a council may request time for public comment before the council moves on to other business, the council would, would take a vote, and if the majority of the council didn't think it was necessary, that would be it, we'd move on, but if the majority agreed that we should hear from people, then we'd have an opportunity to do that.
What section are you referring to again?
It's section, it's the first section.
Under regular meetings?
Under regular meetings.
Oh, okay.
I would just put a number six.
Right, and so you would want a public comment after every motion, not just a?
For a counselor to have the opportunity to, to ask there be one. So we may, you may not use it every single time, but just if we have a discussion, and Ann's here, and I know she's biting her tongue because she desperately wants to comment on what we just talked about, but we don't have a mechanism to allow that. I'd like one of us to be able to say, I'd like to allow for public comment.
I, I would actually favor it being a part of every motion, that we solicit comment from the public, myself. I would, I would favor that.
I, I certainly would like it included somehow. I, I was a little hesitant to have it after every motion, because oftentimes there aren't people here to comment, but I suppose we could just move on quickly if.
Well, I think if any of us has the, has the option to say, I'd like, I'd like us to allow for public comment, then whenever it comes up, whether it be people online, or whether they're here in person, I think that that would work, I mean. And what I can do is I can sort of circulate, if, if you, everybody agrees to table this, I can circulate my language.
I'm just wondering if it, oh, sorry, Matthew.
I was gonna say, I mean, the issue with that is, you sort of, a counselor would then have to know in advance that somebody want, you know, somebody had something to say, and other than, you know, like, somebody in the audience, you know, indicating that or online, I'm not sure how that would work. I think it, to me, it just makes more sense for it to be the default that the public can comment.
You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. It's, I mean, we can always, if, if we implement that as a rule and it becomes tenuous, we can always revisit it as.
If you get four people to agree with you, you get.
Yeah, well, true, yeah.
I guess, I, 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 I think my suggestion accomplishes the same thing without committing us to have to do that every single time. So I'd have to think more about that, but we can, like I said, it sounds like there might be support for tabling this anyways. There are other things in here that I'd like to.
Right, that's kind of where I was at. Marty, did you have any thoughts on what Dan just proposed?
Well, yeah, I can agree with, with what he's saying.
Do you have a preference over having it be a counselor request after every motion, or whether Matthew was saying it should just be embedded in the motion that there's public comment?
Yes, embedded.
Embedded, you'd prefer that. I could kind of go either way, to be honest. My one thought was, if we did add it, is it appropriate in the section you noted, Dan, or should it go under more like rules of debate? But I suppose, it's not really debating either, so it's more of a conversation.
It, I suppose it could go in either place. One of the things, if, if you, if, and it sounds like the majority is in favor of making it a standard part of every motion, I would like there to be a, a three-minute time limit for comments per person. That's because I think that it's important that. I, I think there needs to be a way to structure the conversation, and I guess I wanna think that through.
Yeah, I, I attended a South Portland, it was a budget workshop, but South Portland City Council Budget Workshop recently, and they allowed public comment after every discussion item, but they did have a very strict three-minute policy where they were timing people, and they got a thirty-second warning when they were thirty seconds away from the three minutes, and it, it was pretty effective, that, yeah, work.
And, you know, in, in, in Bedford, we did the same thing, and also, the public got to comment on amendments to motions as well.
It might be something that would be better off in, in section three, further down the page, council meetings and workshop agendas.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Perhaps that would be the place to put it, because I, I, I wasn't thinking just regular council meetings, I was also thinking workshops. As a rule, we don't allow public comment at workshops. I understand the theory for that. The idea is that workshops are the council's time to do work, and we don't make decisions at workshops, so that's the logic for that, but again, I still think there's, we want people to participate in government, and so I'd like to open that up.
May I suggest that that could be like a vote of the council thing? Like for a workshop, we can decide whether or not to allow participation on the, on the, you know, individual workshop?
Well, that's kind of why I proposed it the way I did, so that whether it was a regular meeting or whether it was a workshop, if a counselor felt there were people that might want to be able to speak, and it's pretty, I think it's pretty easy to ascertain if people do.
Usually you can.
That, 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 that's.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna allow online participation, maybe less so, unless, I guess, somebody could put it in chat, but I don't know. It just seems like if you ask, you're more likely to get somebody to say something, you know.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. I think that if, you know, if, yes, the majority wants to put it in the agenda, so there's no sense really.
I would definitely like to see it in the agenda. I, I don't know if we need to explicitly lay it out for every motion, maybe it's just, I think the way South Portland it is, they just had rules explaining how people can participate, which is what this would get at.
And maybe, to your point, maybe it is better for it to be in the, lower down in the section around, section thirteen, rules of debate. You know, that would make a lot of sense to me too, and then, like you said, it wouldn't have to be part of the motion, it would just be part of our rules.
Right, and we could put it, just as we do about public comment, we can put the instructions at the beginning of the section that it would be applicable to.
And we can, yes, we can look at our agenda, and we can even put a footnote to that, explaining.
How it would work.
How it would work.
Yeah, and then we, Matthew, you made a point about people being online, and I think we would need to come up with a specific rule that's very clear to people about how they can participate if they have a comment online.
Well, and it would be really easy, I'm sure, for us to work with Kyle, to have him put. Well, and it would be really easy, I'm sure, for us to work with Kyle, to have him put some, you know, that he could put something up on the screen, because whether they call or they're online or whatever, it would put people on notice that.
Right, they have three minutes.
They have that opportunity if they want it, yeah.
Okay, Nate, it sounds like these are fairly significant changes. Do we, should we table this, or?
I would suggest tabling it for further discussion, and then if we could submit some draft language.
Can I get some guidance on some other things I'd like to change?
Oh, you've had other things?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, that's fine. If we're, if we're tabling, then we should probably talk about this, yeah.
The next one was section three, council meetings and workshop agendas. My question, I just wanted to double check with Nate to make sure that the timeline that we have here is, is working. You know, agenda items are forwarded to the chair or the town manager at least nine working days in advance of the meeting. Holidays can impact those dates. Number two talks about, again, the nine day, nine workdays prior to the meeting. I think, to be quite honest with you, we haven't been following our rule. We've been squeezing stuff into our agendas at, after this deadline, and I think we need to bring a little more structure to it, because I think that when we break this rule, we run the risk of mistakes being made and things being rushed and us not having enough time to really, I spent eight hours going over this packet. I mean, this was a hundred and, you know, thirty-something pages, so I think the timelines are kind of important. So anyways, that's my question, does this timeline still work?
We, in practice, have been getting agenda proposals from council chair on the Friday before, the week before a meeting, so that's about nine days.
Yep.
It is still a little compressed to get a budget, excuse me, a packet agenda done by Tuesday, but we do that. Getting the packet out by Thursday has proven to be difficult. So it would be helpful to have a little bit more advanced notice to be able to assemble packet material and for us on staff to have time to check with, for example, if there's a planning item proposed for the agenda, for us to be able to check with the planning department to make sure that the matter is ready for consideration. So we're working, we had a conversation today talking about how to better identify a queue of planning subjects that are ready for council review. So I would say we'll make it work however, but.
Well, since we're tabling it, do you want to chat with staff and see?
Yeah, let me do that.
Well, it does also, it does potentially also impact our next vote, which is the schedule. I'm, I'm not, right, the way we have it outlined right now is it details not only the dates of our meeting, but when materials do. I, I mean, I think we could potentially still vote on the dates that we're having meetings and then maybe, can we?
Adjust the rest of the schedule.
I mean, that's sort of our, up to us anyway.
Yes, I don't think that's set in concrete like the rules are.
Right, okay.
But I, I think you make an excellent point, Dan, because in order to prepare for these meetings, in order to review the materials, yeah, it's, it's really important that we know these are the materials that are under consideration as opposed, you know, it doesn't really foster putting effort into reviewing things if, you know, when you show up at the meeting, it's different than what you put time in reviewing, so I think that's really important that we get the right information in the packet, and if it's not in the packet, it just has to wait.
I mean, I, I know that, you know, I want to be clear, these are not complaints of mine. We've been short-staffed, we've had turnover, there's been a lot of concrete reasons why, but I think that, you know, we want to make sure that people have a reasonable amount of time to assemble this stuff so that that by itself will help prevent any possible errors, and so. Okay, so we can, we can, we'll come back and visit that.
Yes.
On section three B, I would like to see a change to B one. No item shall be put on a workshop agenda unless two counselors request it. I would like all of our documents, actually, and maybe this isn't the right place, but I would like all of our documents to have the creator's day name, the original date, and any revised dates. And then I would like all the pages of the document numbered, page X of number of pages. And I would like that to become the norm for every document that we're given. I've talked to people, especially the budget, and that's a whole nother kettle of fish, I know, but who, it's not always easy to know what version of a document that we're working with. And I think it's critically important that those three pieces of information behind every document that's created, who made the document, when did they make the document? And the page X of the number of pages is simply so that if you get a six-page document and you look at it and it says there's supposed to be ten pages, then you know you're missing two pages. If they're simply numbered, there's no way for you to be certain that you've got the whole document. So that's a recommendation.
Well, I just have a question for Dan. You said that specifically under the context of workshop meeting agendas?
I'd like it to be on both, the regular meeting, all of our documents. I'm not sure, maybe this isn't the best place to put that, but.
You could add it as a section C.
Yeah, that I was gonna say, you might just need a new section, yeah.
I can do that.
Agenda content, something like that.
The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to see the, our agenda posted on the council door when it's, when it becomes available. I don't know, is it posted in the town hall?
Posted in the front hall.
Is it printed, posted in the front hall? Okay.
Right on the front lobby.
That's enough, I missed that, I guess.
Did you have anything else, Dan?
Uh, yep, I had on pa, packet page twenty-nine, section twelve B one, it says, "Speak to points of order in performances of other members." And that didn't make any sense to me. I'm not sure what that means. I think maybe that might be of the victim of some spell check. "Speak to points of order in something other members shall decide all questions or subject to appeal of the council by motion regularly seconded."
Well, it, it, the bullet above it says, "The chair may speak to points of order in performances of other members." So I, the way I'm reading that is if people are out of order, the chair may note that.
Okay, can we change it to that, then?
Sure.
Because that would, I think for, especially for someone who's not sort of versed in how we work, that would probably be easier to understand. There were another one in section thirteen, further down the rules of debate. Again, some of these, I'm just trying to clean it up to make it a little bit friendlier and a lot, little less sort of jargony. It starts off, "All town counselors shall conduct themselves such as to serve as role models." And I would like to simply change it, "All town counselors shall serve as role models," and delete those five words. Doesn't change it, but it just simplifies it. In A, whoops.
I, I would suggest "All town counselors shall conduct themselves."
Conduct themselves is just unnecessary.
Now, that's kind of wordy.
Maybe there was another word in there that got deleted, like "conduct themselves professionally" or something.
It may have been some of the, the sausage that was made when we put the decorum policy together with our rules. But I think.
I guess I, I prefer something that talks about how we conduct ourselves as opposed to, you know, serving as a role model.
Doesn't, isn't that the same thing? If I serve as a role model, am I conducting myself as a role model?
I don't, I, I agree with Matthew. I think defining what we mean by a role model by describing how your conduct should be, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can leave it the way it is, then, if that's what, if.
Well, I think we need to define, it just says "conduct themselves," how, like, you know, there's a word missing.
Rather than referencing a role model.
Yeah, there's a word missing there.
Such as to serve, seemed agree.
Yeah, I agree with that entirely. And, and I was thinking, oh, I'm gonna try and fix that, and then I read it and I was like, oh, I don't know how to fix that.
So you're saying, would you be okay with conduct themselves as role mo, as role models? Or would you like a different word in there before "role models"?
I guess, you know, I, I would, you know, I would prefer to just say, "conduct ourselves with, you know, with civility and, and courtesy," or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we could cut a bunch of ones out of that sentence. I could work on that if people are interested in me doing that.
Nate, you had a?
I would just suggest that inverting the structure of the sentence might be another way of approaching it, to say, "All town counselors serve as role models of leadership and civility to the community and shall conduct themselves as such," or something like that.
That works for me.
It's a different kind of sausage, but I don't think we should spend any more time on it.
Suffice to say, you'd like to see a change.
Yes.
Uh, the next one is number five, where it says, "Motion to adjourn, comma, lay on the table," or I just would like to simply change that to "table."
Instead of "lay on the table"?
Yeah, because I think that's, again, kind of jargony. I have never understood what B one C means.
B one C says "for the previous question." Chairperson shall receive no much, motion but for the previous question. Yeah, I don't know what that means either.
So I was gonna strike it, but someone.
When a question is under debate, the chairperson shall receive no motion but for the previous question. And that means basically if you're, if you're dealing with, whatever the motion is on the floor, the question that's on the floor, you're either talking about that, or you're tabling it, or adjourning it. That's, that's what that means.
So, yeah, in that case, I would suggest probably the chairperson shall receive no motion but
Amendment?
The current.
That's under F.
But the one currently under discussion.
I'm, I'm, I've, I've, you've lost me a little bit. What's, what section are we in?
We're still in the same, six oh two.
It's page thirty.
Dot thirteen, yeah, page thirty.
It's B one.
B one C.
Got it.
Yeah, if we just change that to "receive no motion but the one under consideration," that would make more sense to me. If that. If that works for people. Under discussion or under consideration?
Yeah, that's fine. I, just to clarify what it means, because I, I also didn't know, whatever.
Okay, thanks.
If council will allow, I'd like to run whatever draft language we come up with past the town attorney.
Yes, that makes sense.
Make sure that we're saying what we think we're saying.
Okay.
Just to, we want to clarify, modernize, clarify the language, just want to make sure I don't, I don't miss the point of some of this and change it in a way that would be fundamentally different.
No, fair enough. I just hesitate. We spend a lot of money with that.
Maybe I can see if the folks at NMA can.
I mean, I, my one thought is, I, I know we're bound by the charter language, but are we, I mean, we're bound like.
Operationally, you're bound by this once you vote on it, unless you change it.
Then I guess we should have the lawyer.
Or you're beholden to it, at least.
Um, to three, three A, on that same page, I just wanted to add, and wait to be recognized by the chairperson and come to the microphone.
So it's B three A?
Yep, B three, B three A, I would just add, and come to the microphone. Again, just trying to telegraph to people what they can expect when we meet.
My one thought there is that if we have hybrid comments, they can't do that.
Fair enough.
So I don't know if we need to be explicit there.
Okay, let's just skip it then and go on.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it does say raise their hand.
Which you can do on Zoom, yeah.
Uh, my next question was, the asterix, or the two asterix at the bottom of that section, C, "The council strongly recommends that all town standing or special committees adopt a similar signing rule." I had a question about whether we should require the planning board and the ZBA to do it, given the fact that they are quasi-judicial and have a different set of responsibilities versus the rest of the town council committees.
I'm just wondering if, if that belongs here or if it belongs in our committee policy?
Uh, yeah.
That's a good idea.
If we, if we make this change, we would have to make it there, yeah.
Going back to, if I might, the public, public members wishing to address the council shall raise their hand, and then C is sign in on a roster provided for that purpose. They don't, I mean, they're just automatically recorded on Zoom where they are, right? They don't actually do that.
Right.
So, I mean, perhaps that C could be changed to, you know, something like, if, if you're, you know, if you're in the council chambers, sign in on the roster provided for that purpose and address the council with the microphone.
We, we.
So that we don't have people addressing this from the chairs, basically.
Yeah, we could do this. We could require that if people were on Zoom, to, to put their name and address in the chat or to. I mean, if, if it's important enough to do one place, maybe we should be doing it everywhere.
I just don't, I don't know if the chat is saved.
Yes, it could be.
Okay, if it's saved, that would make sense if it's.
Or even if they just stayed it, it would be fine, because that would make it part of the record too.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, I had suggested, I had sent, Matthew hasn't seen this, but I had sent you and Marty these Robert, Robert's Rules, that I have. They cover, between the two of them, every set of circumstances I've bumped into as a counselor. Nate did speak earlier, or heard from Alyssa, who had some concerns about us actually putting this into our rules per se, that it would open up the can such that we would be, you know, basically saying that we're following all of Robert's rules, which isn't something that I want to do.
Yeah, I mean, I like that we have some air of informality here.
Absolutely.
Like, I don't want to be that stringent.
So, um, I guess the easiest, I guess I'll just, I guess the simplest way is to just not add them.
Right, oh, just Matthew for your context, Dan had forwarded around.
He can actually pass these down to him.
Some documents that kind of give people an overview for Robert's rules, just, and then he was hoping to have them added to the council rules as part of this vote and also included in the back of the room for people to reference if they're in attendance. But it sounds like Nate spoke to the lawyer and she said that that would create us, some rigidity in how we conduct our meetings.
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, in, in summary, that's kind of what she said, like, you want to be careful to be clear about how you intend to employ it, so it's not implied that you're strict, following strict rules. The rule, the council rules do identify parliamentary procedure under section E on page thirty.
Yep.
And that refers, it says, "The chairperson shall refer to Robert's Rules of Order most recent addition to resolve a matter, a situation that arises that's not addressed in the, in these rules." So I don't see any reason why you, we couldn't publish a, a current version of the rules, or the summary version along with.
You could say C attachment, whatever, on the, after that.
Yeah, I, I think they're useful because they're, they're succinct, they're very simple, and the chart ins, specifically, basically tells you if you can interrupt, what you need a second for, what you don't need a second for, is it a two-thirds vote, a simple majority? You know, things that frankly, I don't even remember after being on the council for six years. That might say more about my memory than. You know, things that frankly, I don't even remember after being on the council for six years. That might say more about my memory than, but. It's just, I think, good to have, and when people come. Um, we've taken more time now to kinda explain to them why we're doing things the way we do, but I just think it would be helpful. So, yeah, okay, I guess we can do that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with adding it as a kind of an attachment with reference to this section you noted, um, Nate, about parliamentary procedure.
And other than just some formatting stuff that I can give to Nate on a side, those are my only thoughts.
Okay.
Um, and I'm willing to sort of own um. Editing what we've done tonight to circulate if you want.
You might have the most recent copy, given you made the edits last time, so if you're, yeah, if you're willing to do that.
Yep, okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Thank you for your patience.
No, thank you for going through that, because I admittedly did a little bit, but probably not to that detail.
So, um. I don't know if Matthew and Marty are amenable to tabling, did we?
Yeah, I think we should table.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I think Dan, you had the motion, so.
Oh, I did.
Dan and then Marty.
I I I am okay with tabling.
Okay, yeah. Uh, do we need to, we have to vote on the tabling, Nate?
You do need to vote on tabling.
Okay, so do I have a motion to table item number five?
So moved. And no discussion.
Yeah, no discussion with table.
We need a vote, though, right?
Yeah.
You do need a vote.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Uh, Marty?
Yes.
Uh, Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next up, item number six, to review and act upon approving the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Schedule for council meetings and workshop, actually, it's just, it's just council meetings, it's not workshops.
Right. Workshops to be announced.
Yeah, uh, so do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any thoughts on the schedule? We did make adjustments this year for July, or July and August meetings. Um, we've moved them to the third. Um, Tuesday of the month. They were originally, uh, they have been traditionally been following on the first Tuesday. Um, but we would like to make space for the holiday, July fourth, and then, um, just keeping that consistent through August. It's, um. Also, I should note, November, the November meeting was changed to the second Tuesday due to the election. If if. Election interrupts the meeting, it's moved to the next Tuesday.
So that would be Tuesday, March the?
November, November fourteenth.
November fourteenth, right. May I add a another consideration question?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, Pam Edson noted that the presidential preference election is March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
The primaries?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So the question being, do you feel that that interferes? With the town's capacity to have a town council meeting that evening, and if so, do you wanna change the date?
Yeah, I would think so. If we follow suit.
With the.
With that, it should be the following Tuesday, because that's the, what it's outlined in the charter.
So that would be March the twelfth.
March the twelfth.
Oh, that's next year.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if people have their calendars available. I have mine, but I think it's not, things filled in really, but.
That means that we would have two meetings back to back.
We would, yeah.
Which is okay by me, but painful, but.
I don't know how that is for staff, Nate, like that, the turnaround on that.
Just wouldn't.
So it'll be the twelfth?
If we move it, it would, and then we'd have another meeting on the nineteenth, the following.
Just have to be judicious in what goes on the agendas.
Okay.
Not overstacking the second, the March nineteenth agenda.
I mean, I, we could just go with one meeting that month, like, like the other months, and then, you know, like, if if something comes up where we need to have a special meeting.
You could.
We could.
Only for a second, yeah. So if we move the the one on the nineteenth out to the twenty-sixth, then you know, it'd be the, be the same thing the next week.
Yeah, my my one concern with only having one meeting in March is that's like the height of budget season, and I. I think that might be not the most prudent decision to not have two meetings that much.
Yeah, at this point in time, I think. I think we need to have a long heart to heart about the budget process.
We do, but I don't wanna take away the meeting.
Rope us in, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah.
I I'm not, I've never been, I've never been happy with the one meeting in November.
No, I know you haven't.
But. But, yeah, no.
Okay, so we agreed we can move that to the twelfth, March twelfth of twenty twenty-four?
It doesn't really, yeah, it, I mean, we have another Tuesday in that month, but it doesn't really help, because that would make it the twenty-sixth and then the following.
Right, that's what Marty was just saying, yeah. It's still two back to back.
It's still two back to backs.
Yeah.
I just don't know, I don't know about that. It wouldn't matter to me if whichever two's back to back, if there's any, if it matters to staff.
We'll make it work. I kinda just have to be judicious.
Okay, so we're moving March fifth, twenty twenty-four to March twelfth. Twenty twenty-four due to the primary ele- presidential primaries happening on March fifth. Um, does anyone have any other thoughts about the other dates? We have, um, uh, we've added a a formal council retreat date of September sixteenth, which is a. Saturday, I believe.
It is.
We've been meeting the last couple of years, um, in either, what did we do, September, last year, and then.
It was October.
We did November, I think it's October and November the year before, but we've decided to make it a.
It was October, it was late October, I think.
We decided at our last retreat that we would have that, um, a more standard time. Matthew, we have a. Kind of like a full day retreat with the council and some key staff, just to go over priorities for the year. Um, so that it will help department heads prioritize their work.
When is that again?
September sixteenth.
Oh, that's our retreat, yeah.
Yep.
And I'm I'm looking for venues for that, if any of the council members have any suggestions. Pine Land is. Uh, minimum twelve hundred dollar charge, um, so that's probably out of the question.
I mean, I honestly, I'd be fine with the library, like, I don't, I don't need anything fancy. I just would like heat this year.
Library.
Just like what?
Heat.
Oh, come on, Chris, that's.
That was roughly.
Library seems like a great option.
I don't know if others feel, maybe we need to go offsite, but I I don't know. It feels far enough away from here.
I don't think we need the expense of, yeah.
It's very nice meeting, yeah, plus food.
And heat doesn't seem completely unreasonable.
No. It was unusually cold for September, but.
It was chilly that day.
It was just chilly. Um.
I have one more suggestion.
You have one more suggestion, okay.
I I would like to, um. Put the town council committee. Well, we called it Academy last year. I sort of prefer retreat myself, but I would like to sked- I would like to put that date on the calendar, and I'm proposing Thursday, October fifth.
Oh, that's right. I forget, I don't have it in front of me, and Sandy was, wrote it down. What did we decide that, um, the schedule, Nate, do you remember? We were gonna have the retreat for councilors.
It was something like the first or second week of October, I don't have.
Which this is the beginning of.
Basically what you're saying.
And you were, you suggested what date, Dan?
Thursday the fifth.
So Matthew, I'm, I I don't know if you were able to attend last year's, remember we had, um, all the committees get together?
I did not.
Yeah, okay, right, so we were just hoping to do that annually, as people seem to like the opportunity to, um. Collaborate and or go over ru- rules for committees. So that would be October fifth or something.
That's my suggestion, yes.
What do you wanna call it? The counselor academy?
Uh, I, um.
Call it, yeah.
Town, you know, town council committee retreat works for me, but. I I would like to ex- talk about, um, expanding the agenda a little bit to to not just be. Kind of a learning session, but I think it's a. You know, it's an opportunity for us to get some feedback about the budget and some, and and other issues.
I I would definitely be in favor of expanding that, but, yeah.
Do you wanna have that in the evening?
That's what we did last time, and it seemed to work for people pretty well, I thought. At least the people that were there. Um, gave us some pretty fa- positive feedback. And I'm hoping it's one of those things that will kind of grow in, uh. As as time goes on, as sort of word of mouth that it was valuable for people. You know, we have some eighty odd people working with us. Um, on town committees that we rarely ever get to see unless we're the liaison of that committee. And, you know, that's a pretty big ba- brain trust for town.
Oh, that's true, we have that here.
Yeah.
And I I just think we need to to think about how we can leverage that. All those connections and all that experience and all that knowledge.
If I may, I'd I'd like to suggest perhaps two different meetings. I think there's, um, a lot of value to the weaving. And engagement between committees and looking for, uh, common interests. Uh, I also think there's a lot of value in. Training on the the official roles and responsibilities of those committees, and I I just wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna try to jab too much into one meeting, but I. Uh, maybe a condensed version of the training that we did last time, but but some of that. Is pretty valuable for making sure the meetings are run correctly based on the town's statutory obligations.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, I'm, yeah, I'm not trying to exclude that. I agree with you, there is value in that, but I think maybe. We can find a way to open it up a little more. I worry about scheduling two of them.
That's what, that was my concern. I mean, it was hard enough to get.
Maybe we can have a conversation about what the agenda would be and see, and if we got in a real pickle, we just have to pick one, or maybe we alternate them, or I don't know, but.
Yeah, well, is everyone okay with that date in addition?
Yes.
Okay, so can we vote on this with just amendments?
You can vote as amended. It's it's your document, really.
As amended, yeah. Uh, Matthew, you had something else?
Well, I just, I just had a thought, and this maybe just is too much of a wrench in the work, but going back to the. Uh, March fifth meeting, moving to March twelfth. Um, I just, I just noticed that there are five Tuesdays in April. And if we moved the meetings in April to the second Tuesday, then we could maintain the staggering, but again, you know, then we're not.
Will we run into a conflict with the planning board?
Are they always on Tuesday also? And there are second Tuesdays, yeah.
So we're gonna run into that conflict in March.
Oh. Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, I'm I'm sorry.
Yeah, Thursday, yeah, I thought, I didn't think they were.
How long have we been doing this? What's my name?
Begins with a T.
And who are all you people? What are you doing in my living room?
Um, okay, well, if we did that, so we'd eliminate March fifth. Which would leave us with.
Then we could do the March twelfth and the twenty-sixth, and then.
One, two, four weeks between meetings. So, oh, March twelfth, March twen- oh, March twenty-sixth. Then April ninth and April twenty-third.
Yeah, and then you maintain your Tuesday gap between meetings. Just a thought. And that way we don't lose a meeting in our crucial budget time.
I know, but then we're like four, we're four weeks between meetings. The twentieth through the night, no, the, when did, did you say, March twelfth? Yeah. One, two, no, it's three weeks, okay. I don't know. Nate, what do you think, just given the season?
I'm just taking a look. I wanna make sure that we can just move stuff around.
Well, I know, I was thinking about the charter. I.
That's what I'm looking for.
I I think it says, if we decide to move it, we can, but I don't.
Get the charter here.
Hours and duties, nominations. Regular meetings. The council shall, at its first meeting or soon thereafter as possible, establish by resolution a regular place and time for holding its regular meetings. And shall meet regularly at least once a month. Shall also provide a method for calling special meetings.
Okay, so there's nothing in here that says you can't move it from first and third Tuesday. I think there's something in the.
There is some, there defines, it must be in the rules, that's where it is, yeah.
Yeah, in the rules, it says, shall be held at panel on the first and third Tuesday, except in July, August, November, councils shall meet only once during each month. When said day falls on a holiday or election day, the regular meeting shall be held on the following Tuesday. The date of any regular meeting may be changed by an order or resolve passed with at least four affirmative votes. At a previous meeting of the council, provided, so this is a previous meeting. Provided that the said change in date will still provide for two regular meetings in each month, provided. There are enough days left in the month to do so. So I think you can do this.
Under that, I would say so.
Okay.
Just wanted to be sure.
Do it as far as advance.
I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah. Um, okay. Do we need to table this, given how many changes there are?
Um, so I count two changes, um, unless you're gonna stagger your other schedule, which is fine, we can commit that. If you care to table, that's entirely.
How do folks feel about staggering, as Matthew proposed?
I don't think there's a problem with it myself. I mean, it, you know, the list is published, so it shouldn't cause any heartache for anybody else, I don't think.
Okay, so.
Appreciate you. We could send out an urgent email that week.
I.
Oh, yeah. Just us, no, it's true, everything's.
It's a funny affect of our web software. So we're talking about March.
So March fifth would go away.
March twelfth, March twenty-sixth.
March twelfth.
Um.
March twenty-sixth.
April ninth? April twenty-third? If I got that right.
April ninth, yeah, April twenty-third.
That's the proposal.
So March twenty twelfth, twenty-sixth.
And April. Suppose anybody's got the school break schedule.
The school break? Oh, that's easy to find, um, let me use. I think they have it posted in there.
I think it's usually later than than nine, but. So I believe we usually, are usually, it's our second meeting in April, if I remember, that comes in the school vacation.
Calendar. Wrong, it's not easy to find.
Would that affect any of these schedules?
It could.
Yeah, and liaison pieces, too.
We'll have to, they'll just need to move around it.
There are times as liaisons that we miss meetings. It's not very often, but something's gotta give. And. Uh, let's see, calendars. The twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar, here we are. In April, it's the school vacation is the fifteenth through the nineteenth, it's that week.
So we're s- we're missing that.
We're missing it.
We're dodging that, okay.
That's actually better, probably, at least for me.
So April fifteenth through nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
The fifteenth is.
Good for me, too. I might actually go to Peru.
There you go. Okay, so, um, is everyone comfortable with those changes as amended?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, um.
I, can I just add one more quick thing?
Yeah.
I think we're going to be, because they're workshops, it doesn't matter, because these are only our regular meetings. Um, however. Um, one of my concerns. And I was trying to figure out how to go about this, is, and I sent Nate, I think I copied you guys on the, um. I think that our current rules say if you miss three consecutive meetings, three consecutive regular meetings, and these are the regular meetings. And I would, and I believe the charter actually says that. But I think workshops are regular expected meetings, too. They're they're not.
I agree with that.
We're not figuring out all of the dates now. Um, and somehow I would like to see if we can find a way to word our rules such that, um.
A meeting is a meeting.
A meeting is a meeting.
Yeah, I I.
I agree.
And I believe there is a mechanism that Alyssa, um, told Nate about, that basically we would have to. Create an order such that that's the case. So we don't have to do that now, but it is.
So it wouldn't be a charter amendment?
No, I don't think so. I think that, it was my, am I correct? Was my understanding from?
You, yeah, I think, um. The point was that the regular meetings that you establish on this calendar, if I understood right, is. you, you have the authority to set this.
Yeah.
These would be irregular meetings. Any special meetings, any workshops wouldn't
Wouldn't.
Count the same.
And we, and, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're referring to an ordinance or are the council rules?
Well, it's in the charter, actually.
Right, so, um.
I'm trying to figure out how to change it without changing the charter, but it sounds like.
Right now, it says that if a councillor misses three consecutive regular meetings, they would need to potentially resign their seat. Current definition, yes, the current definition, as our lawyer has indicated, of a regular meeting are these twice monthly meetings, as we've noted on the schedule we're voting on, but does not include workshops, which.
Okay, and so, so there's not an ordinance that governs this, that's separate from the, from the charter? And so, okay, so a device of creating a council order that.
Yeah, but we can't do that. So, I mean, the charter trumps all, so really, if we wanna do this, I can.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Looking at a charter amendment.
It would be a charter, which the, which the, um, we, we could do theoretically, but it would have to be on the ballot for voters to vote on.
I think the rationale would be that if a council member was unable to attend a rescheduled meeting or a special meeting because it conflicted with some other obligation that they had, that it would not be punitive against them, whereas the expectation is that you will arrange your personal schedule such that you can come to the regular meetings.
Right, and, and to be clear, these are un, these are like unexcused absences, where we weren't notified ahead of time that you weren't going to go. Everybody misses a meeting sometimes, it's inevitable, so.
One, and one meeting's not the issue, but three consecutive meetings.
Right.
But it, it, it does specify unexcused absences in the charter as well.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
I mean, I think it's a, it's, I'm not eager, I mean, people voted to put people on the council, and I'm not eager to try and create a mechanism that undoes that easily. But unfortunately, I think the circumstances that we had with councillor Curtis were such that it really did put uh, the council in a bind. And I think it, and we didn't have a mechanism for resolving it, and I think we should have one, but we can, since it's a charter amendment, we can just talk about it later, 'cause it doesn't affect this, so.
Right.
But most of the workshops are held on council meeting nights, right?
We do, so the way we've been operating the last couple of years, I guess, um, is we have, we generally have a, about an hour of workshop scheduled prior to these regular meetings, the first and third Tuesdays usually.
Six o'clock to six fifty-five.
Right, and then, um, we've been scheduling two, usually about two additional workshops on whatever dates work for us, um, every month, yeah.
Just, uh, I'm, when we get into the discussion about the budget, I'm going to be proposing day-long meetings for the budget, so that, that will be a big change, but that's not anything we have to do now.
Right, during budget season, it wasn't just two extra workshops, we had those extra workshops plus extra budget workshops, and it became about, I think we had twelve budget workshops in addition to our regular meetings and additional workshops, so it was.
And those were two-hour workshops.
You're gonna think you live here.
Generally, yeah, we, so we, we're all in favor of having a conversation about maybe doing a different type of schedule for the budget this year, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if I would go for eight hours, but it makes sense that we would do a
Six hours.
Eight, six hours, something reasonable, I mean. And, and to, so that, you have to come out once instead of three different times.
Yes, or twelve different times.
Yeah. But that's in the, I just wanted to throw that out there, but that's not what we're talking about now.
Okay, well, are we all comfortable with the amended schedule? Marty, you had moved, and Matthew, you seconded the the motion for the schedule.
So the revised motion, as a point of clarity, would be the Gray Town Council approves the 2023, 2024 schedule for council meetings as amended.
As amended.
Okay, so we had the changes in March and April, and what were the, the other change was to add the?
October 5th.
October 5th.
Committee.
Volunteer leadership meeting, yeah.
And that's, that, those are the only changes.
Is that an official town council meetings? I presume so, because you will all wanna attend it.
We're all there, so, yeah.
That was my thinking, yeah. Otherwise, we end up having to do something special to announce it.
Okay.
Okay, um, Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next up, this is gonna be a long conversation too. To review and act upon the town council liaison assignments, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
This is on page thirty-four, any version of it is on page thirty-four.
Right, so our current, our current version here, as Nate noted, is on packet page thirty-four. Anne, would you, would you like to come up to podium, since this impacts you also? Anne Gas was appointed earlier this evening as a fifth council member, but she's not yet sworn in, but we'd like to consult with her about her preferences on liaison assignments, um, since she will be attending.
Do you have the list, Anne?
In front of me, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Um, okay, um, well, I'll just, I'll just start by saying that I'm, I'm ready to be flexible. The one thing I would like to retain is my appointment on the Greater Portland Council of Governments, one, because I've really enjoyed that work, but also because they've already voted me as a member of the executive committee at the general assembly, so it might be a little difficult for them to amend that. I don't know how folks feel about retaining that.
All right, that's fine, that makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, but then also, so that's just the executive committee for G P C O G. We also, I, I can also be a delegate, um, as I, as I am now. But we would also need a second delegate to attend, that basically the responsibility would be to attend the general assembly for G P C O G, which occurs in May, usually the end of May, um, to vote on the G P C O G budget and priorities. Um, and then I think we can also have an alternate. We don't have one this year, but this year I was the only one who attended, so it might be beneficial to have an alternate. Is anybody else interested in being a delegate or alternate for G P C O G?
I, I'm willing, but if Matthew's.
I'm willing as well.
Yeah, I'll let Matthew have that.
Okay. So, and then, would you like to be the alternate?
Sure.
Okay. I need to organize this better, let me see.
You don't know the date of that yet, but it's in May.
It's usually the very end of May. This year it was in, it was on May, May 25th. It's usual, the last two years it's been at Saint Joseph's College in Wyndham, so I don't know if that will be true again, but, um. Okay, so Dan is G P C O G alternate. Matthew is a delegate, and I'll be on executive committee slash delegate. Okay, um, I'm just gonna, I think a good way to go through this is to go down the list, and the first up is actually councillor Carter's, um, assignments that she had last year, so that might be a good way to, um, start. So Dry Mills Schoolhouse, um, I have, does anyone have any interest in Dry Mills Schoolhouse? Are they, the, the charge for that committee is to oversee the renovations, and then any
Maintenance and operation.
Maintenance and operations for that building.
Collaboration with the Buildings and Grounds Director, who orchestrates most of the repair work, or, or gets the contractors to come in as needed.
Do we know when they meet?
Oh, golly, uh, it seems like it's the first week, like it's the first Thursday or something like that.
Dry Mills Schoolhouse.
I think they also do programming, don't they?
Oh, they do what?
Educational programming.
Programming, yes, I think that they intend to, once they
Yeah, get the place open.
Which I think the opening was this.
March 10th.
Yeah, March 10th. I'm happy to sit on that committee if others aren't passionate about it. I know Sandy, um, just volunteered, so I guess is, she'll be doing a lot of work there too. Okay, uh, next up is Recreation Committee. They meet, it says here the first Monday at six. I don't know if that's completely accurate.
Trying to remember, Rec is one of, ones that's struggling with quorum.
Right.
I went to their meeting last month. And, uh, or.
Yeah, there's two vacancies, so.
Oh, there are.
I think they officially have a quorum right now, but it's a slim.
Yes, they have three members, so they have just enough for a quorum.
They, they seemed well-attended to me compared to the Resiliency.
I, I would be willing to take this on if you like it's really relevant to my life, um, but I can't do this and Resiliency, so I, that would be a conversation if somebody else wants to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I could do Rec.
You wanna do Rec? Okay. Next up is Open Space Committee. Um, Anne, I know you are a current member of Open Space, and you have your founding councillor, I believe. Um, I think you have some desire to continue on, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to continue as liaison, go back to being liaison, I guess, yeah.
Is everyone okay with?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay, we did G P C O G already. Uh, the General Assistance Fair Hearing Authority, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's literally never met in the time that you've been on council, Dan.
It's a two-state, yes. It's just in case.
Right, um.
Is it, it, I'm just, actually.
There's two people that need to be on that, correct? Yeah, okay.
This is just an appeal body.
Right, it's a quasi judicial one, though, right?
It would have some, because it's s, s, uh, state statute, it has a different standing, but I don't really know the technicality.
So would councillors assigned to that be voting members, similar to there's a councillor on the finance committee, or is it? I guess it doesn't, we just find out if we met, but.
Interestingly enough, it's not on our list of committees, 'cause it's never, so we probably need to create a page for that.
Yeah, and it probably would refer to statute, so.
Yep.
I'm hap, I'm happy to be one of the reps for that. Sandy was prior to you and I.
Oh, yeah, I'd be happy to be a.
Dan, you were a current.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to stay.
Is it hard work? Sorry. Yeah, okay, so Dan.
I'll, I'll put the, Dan, why don't you keep it and I'll.
Okay.
Dan, do you wanna do? I don't need to do it.
Yeah, I'll do it, your, your chair, I think that's enough.
Fair Housing. Okay, so I, next up was me, I'm G P C O G, and I'm currently on O A C and Resiliency. Taking on Dry Mills. Yeah, maybe we should go through other people first and see. I'm just worried about my time commitment.
Yeah, well, I think you should as chair, absolutely, it's heavy lifting, so, um, you know, since you just got elected to the executive, clearly that makes sense, we already decided.
Right, right.
Of the two that are there, resilience or ordinance, which would you prefer to keep?
I mean, I, it's hard, 'cause I, ordinance advisory, Doug does a lot of the heavy lifting, so, and I, and I appreciate the conversations. 'Cause I think we're really starting to get into the meat of like comprehensive plan work, um, which I would like to continue.
Near and dear to your heart.
Yeah, um, and, but the same, so can I, Resiliency, they're, they're struggling a bit because Matthew and Jane were the current members, and that's not a quorum, and now Matthew's on council, so he can't also be a member, so I, I, I fear if I step away that it might, it might, um, hurt with the work that we have going on, so.
Well, if you just keep those two, is that too much?
I don't know, I don't know about, I don't know if adding Dry Mills will put a kink in, I don't know.
I mean, we can make, we can, this is not set in cement, so we can make changes as time goes on, if, if there's an issue that comes up.
Yeah, I suppose that's true. I mean, Matthew, how do you feel about Resiliency as a former member? Do you?
I'm actually, I would be more interested in the ordinance advisory committee.
Okay. Is that something you'd like to take on?
I, I would, but I mean, not if, if it's like you said, near, near and dear to your heart, 'cause of the.
Well, I mean, I, I certainly can do ordinance work as a councillor too, so it's not, it's certainly not.
You do bring an expertise to that group, though, about the, about the com-plan that I think is kind of valuable for them.
Right. It's true, um, Matthew does have experience, I'm sure, with or policy things, and so, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we could both lend, when do we come back to O A C and Resiliency?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, Dan, you are currently on finance committee as the liaison, and then
Right.
Marty is a voting member, which
Right.
Is anyone else interested in finance committee besides Marty and Dan, or are you two interested in changing?
Yeah, we could use another member.
Well, I don't think we can.
We can't add another member, I just meant if, if Dan or you don't wanna do it anymore, somebody else.
I'm, I'm okay keeping it. I mean, the liaison is kind of a new thing anyways, I don't, not a voting member of the committee, but, um.
Marty, do you prefer to be a voting member?
I'm fine with what I got.
Okay. Okay, and Dan, you are liaison. Okay, uh, also, planning board, so so Dan, you're the, you're the liaison, then we also have an alternate, which Marty's the alternate. And do you both attend those meetings at this point?
I always go.
Yeah, he always, Marty always comes. He doesn't have to, but he always.
Yeah, okay.
That's how I learn.
Yeah, no, that's good, yeah.
Um, I'd like to keep planning board, um, you know, uh, if, if so, if someone else wants to, to take it on, I can talk about trading, but.
I'm fine with you keeping planning board personally, I don't, Dan, Marty, are you okay with still being an alternate, or do you?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we've done some good work with planning board and built some bridges there, and I'd kinda like to continue that.
That makes sense. Okay, um, and then, Dan, you were keeping the fair housing authority, the board.
And the Board of Assessment, same thing, is.
Okay, that they rarely meet, but they might meet this year because we're doing the
It's possible, but we haven't, yeah.
Re-equal, the equalization project, yeah.
As opposed to reevaluation.
That, that probably practically won't get done in this fiscal, in this ca-
This session?
Term, in this session, but yes.
So you'd like to keep that, Dan?
Yeah, I, I think so. Um, I could, I think I could pick something else up.
Okay.
I confess to not being a super interested in Resiliency, no offense meant to the Resiliency folks, but, um.
Do you wanna do O A C again, or, I mean, I I feel like I have a pretty good rapport going with them, but.
Yeah, I don't wanna change that, I don't think, myself.
Do you wanna do Dry Mills?
Yeah, I could do Dry Mills, sure. That'll be, that'll be interesting.
Um, okay, thanks for taking on something else. Um, Marty, you've got, we just kept finance committee, planning board, do you wanna continue on zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Matthew, are you okay?
No, no, yeah, I don't wanna take anything away from anyone.
Well, what are you, I should've asked you, I should've started with this, what are you most interested in, in doing?
Well, I'm, I am interested in community television advisory committee.
Okay.
Um, that would give me three things, um, and, uh, so I mean, those are, I guess those are the things I'm most interested in, um, but I'm.
The Rec and G C T V, or, okay. Does anyone else want G C T V?
No, I guess that would only give me two things, yeah, 'cause.
Well, G P C O G delegates, yeah, is kind of just a one, one-time.
Yeah, okay.
There's still the trustees, and there's the, uh.
Yeah, there's other things, yeah, okay, well, let's put you down for G C T V if you have an interest in that.
Yeah, I'm interested in, I, I'm interested in, in, you know, any of those of councillor curriculums.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, uh, like I said, I wanna be taking things from, you know, people if they have an interest in it, and I don't wanna take on all three of them.
Okay, well, Marty, you wanted to keep Z B A.
Yeah.
Okay, and then what about Wild Blueberry Festival?
I'll stay with that, and also add the community daily liaison and liaison to the staff committee, that's the code enforcement officer, the planner, and the planning board chair.
Oh, we did add, we did add a liaison appointment, or we were, did we vote on that yet? We talked about it at the last meeting for the staff. We talked about it at the last meeting for the staff review.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall.
The staff review.
I'll take that if it's.
Yes, we did, I talked about being the liaison to, um. Staff review from the standpoint of the goal, one of our goals is to move things more in that direction.
Okay.
And I think just from a, um, it's 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 kinda part of that whole planning process, but it's it's a. It's it's a part we haven't really been involved in, and again, it's just a liaison role, it's not a.
Yeah, I know we talked about, we s- we agreed that we'd like to move forward with having a liaison on staff review, but I don't. I don't know if we officially voted on or if we have to vote on that, or I don't.
If you're creating it now, it will just be part of your sleep.
I mean, you know, Marty and I are the liaison and the alternate, so we could just be the same for staff review.
For, oh, the planning, okay.
Would you, in, uh, since it's a staff review, I I I don't know if you would necessarily envision adding this to the committee. Board and affiliations policy.
True, although the chair of the planning board is a member of the staff review.
Mm-hmm. We need to think about how best to institutionalize this, but for the purposes of what you're doing tonight, I don't see why you couldn't make that assignment.
Okay, if you think that's okay without us defining it.
Yeah, I don't. It's not in any way.
This is your document.
Been to encumber the staff review process.
Right, just to be a liaison.
Yep.
Okay, so, and then Marty, you said gray community day, that's not technically a committee.
No, but I've been working with it anyway, so, one kinda dovetails with the other people, yeah.
Yeah. Do, um.
These are committee and board liaisons.
Yeah, I think we need to define that as a committee before we can have, um.
Okay.
But we should have a conversation about how we're delegating work with that, for sure.
Sure.
Um, okay, so Marty, you have, you have a lot here, so just wanna be sure you're okay. You've got finance committee member, uh, planning board alternate.
Zoning board.
The ZBA, wild blueberry festival, and now you're joining staff review.
Yeah.
Staff review is not, uh, uh.
It's not a voting member, right?
Yeah, and it's not a regular.
It doesn't meet every month.
No, okay, all right. So what are, what are those regular for you, those finance committee, planning and?
Yeah, case by case.
Yeah, ad hoc.
They usually.
Does ZBA meet reg, they don't meet all the time either?
They usually meet once a month.
Once a month.
Lately, they have been.
Yeah.
The goal is actually to put them out of business, but.
Are you feeling comfortable with that amount of, that's a lot for you, okay?
That's true.
Ultimately.
Statually.
Okay.
The better, the better.
You're okay, just tell us if you end up being not okay with it. Um. Yeah, counselor gas, what what do you, what would you like?
Uh, you know, I've served on, uh, all three of, I've been liaison to, um, C TAC and to the Gray Library trustees and to, uh, C E D C. So I'm willing to do any of those again. I I do have a light load so far, so.
Yeah, you have open space, the fair housing, which doesn't meet much, and the board of assessment review, which doesn't meet much. Um.
Did you say fair housing or fair hearing?
Fair housing authority, general assistance fair housing.
Oh, okay.
Fair hearing, yeah.
It does say fair hearing here.
I think it is fair hearing, not fair housing.
Oh, fair, okay.
I'm not sure actually which is.
Which is right, yeah.
So so just, it is fair hearing authority, and this is in statute, I just looked it up, so.
Yeah.
The members of this body would make rulings or decisions about appeals coming from the general assistance director. And then it's similarly to other grievance type appeals.
I was just reading it wrong, yeah, and that makes more sense. Um.
It may have to do with housing, but it's actually hearing.
Right.
Okay, so, um, Matthew, um, do you have a strong preference between library trustees or community economic development committee?
Um, I wouldn't say I don't have a strong preference, but, um, I think maybe the library trustee would be, be a slight preference, but.
Okay.
Wanna do rock, paper, scissors?
You can have the trustees, I'll do C E D C again.
Okay.
And did you t- do the community television one as well, Matthew, or or is?
I'd like to.
Yeah, she's.
Yeah, that's fine. That one needs a quorum, I think, right?
How often do they?
Fluctuates.
Yeah.
They should meet monthly, monthly, m- most committees meet monthly. Um, library meets every other month. Um.
You have OAC and a resiliency committee.
Yeah, what do I, oh, right, okay. I can, I'll keep OAC, happy to keep OAC, and, um. If you want library, Matthew, you can have library, I'll, I'll keep with resiliency.
Well, do you want me to do resiliency? I mean, you have a big load as chair.
I'm just, they're just doing so much work right now. I, that's where I'm struggling, is cause I just know it's gonna be a heavy lift, they do not have a quorum. And we're trying to get our work done for the, to join the community resilience partnership, um.
Resiliency. Yeah.
And I, you know, Rachel of two oh seven permaculture is serving as our service provider, but you know, without a quorum, it's it's hard for her to really, um. Complete what she's doing, so. Yeah.
Re-recruiting is a, a challenge there, or that's a.
Uh, right, right. I don't know, Anne, you might be, it might be beneficial for you to do that in terms, you have so many contacts. Maybe you could recruit some new members, I don't know.
Yeah, happy to give that a shot.
Well, do you want me to take C E D C if you're doing resiliency?
I mean, really, if I have open space and C E D C and resiliency, that's three, right, and plus the general assistance fair hearing, but that doesn't meet, so.
Well, then I only have two, as it stands, so.
Well, I know, but you're also chair, so, which is not work.
Yes, but you can only see the tip of your iceberg.
Yes, that's right.
Um, okay, I just feel like, I feel bad that I'm not taking more.
We'll check in with you in a month.
Okay, maybe.
I'll go to my first meeting and let you know.
So are you OAC then?
Yeah, I was gonna do OAC, um, and then Anne was, so I'm OAC and GP cog executive committee slash delegate.
GP cog.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, let me go over it, let me go over it, um, make sure everyone's on board. Okay, so I was doing GP cog delegate slash executive committee and OAC. Which feels really light to me, but maybe that's good. Um, Marty, you had finance committee as a member.
Mm-hmm.
So a voting member, planning board as an alternate.
Mm-hmm.
Zoning board of appeals.
Mm-hmm.
Wild blueberry festival.
Right.
And now staff review liaison, and then we can talk more about commu- gray community day as a committee a separate time.
Maybe we just put staff review in parentheses after planning board.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Because it's, because they're related.
Okay, well, then, yeah, I would come after yours also, Dan.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um.
Planning board parentheses, staff review, committee.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay, and Matthew, we have, you're a delegate for the GP cog general assembly.
Mm-hmm.
You're rec, uh, rec committee.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, GCTV.
Mm-hmm.
And Gray Library trustees.
Yep. Yep, no, I mean, that really only gives me three things, so, and I'm not chair, so, I don't feel too bad about it.
Well, Gray Library does meet every, they meet every other month, so that'll be, and they're really easy to get a llama, so you'll like that a lot.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, not that others pe- are people not, are not easy.
I I I'm just saying, don't feel bad about your light load, cause it seems pretty light to me too, so.
Yeah. Okay. Dan, you're GP cog.
I don't feel guilty at all.
Okay, good. J- Dan, you're GP cog alternate, fair hearing, I mean, we, I wrote it down wrong.
Yep.
Uh, fair hearing authority, uh, finance committee liaison.
Yep.
Uh, planning board and staff review liaison, and dry mills.
Yes.
Does that feel like too much?
And the board of assessment review.
I can take dry mills back if you feel like it's too much.
Well, or maybe Matthew, I don't know, Matthew would be interested in dry mills.
That, that.
You'd like to do?
That that makes sense.
Okay.
And that's a monthly or irregularly meeting body?
It's generally monthly.
Sandy was like all over, all over doing that, and I don't, we we could probably send her an email, I don't know when they meet exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, they're, um, finalizing the renovations to the schoolhouse and they're supposed to be having an open house.
They had sort of a soft opening house a couple of weekends ago.
They had a soft open house, yeah, so, um, and then I think they might, the the, what they're doing might transition quite a bit and soon, so I don't. They might reassess how often they're meeting and that.
I think they're also hoping to build a network with other sort of one-room schoolhouses that are spread around to other communities to, um. Build sort of a network.
Okay, you'd like to take that?
Sure.
Okay, so Dan, just to reiterate, Matthew's gonna take dry mills, you're gonna do GP cog as an alternate, fair hearing authority, finance committee liaison.
Okay.
Um, planning board and staff review liaison, and that that was it.
Okay.
Uh, Anne, you have open space.
Board of assessment review, did you add that one to me? I think that's still me.
Oh, did I do that? Okay.
I have that down for you and counselor gas.
I do.
Yep.
I had it for Anne, but I forgot to write it for you. Okay, Anne, you have open space, fair hearing, authority, board of assessment review, and C E D C.
Resiliency.
And res- and resiliency, I didn't write it down, see, I didn't, I didn't know what to do with it. Are you okay with that? That's, that is a lot, those are a lot of heavy.
Well, board of assessment doesn't meet.
No, but open space, C E D C and resiliency are all heavy lifts.
Yeah, that's fine, I think that'll do.
Okay.
There may be some tie-ins that I'll recommend between resiliency and C E D C.
And open space, actually, that would actually be really.
I think that's a really nice bouquet.
That is actually really, there's been a.
It's smelling good to me.
Yes, right, okay.
If you, if you want me to sit in on the next, so resiliency was scheduled to meet, um, when were we scheduled to meet, Matthew? Um.
Last Thursday.
No, this Thursday, but we postponed it, cause we didn't know who was gonna be assigned or what that would look like, and also there's no quorum, so. Um, I'm just gonna, I'll connect you and Jane over email, just to see where she's, where she's at.
Okay. All right, that sounds good, and I can check in with Rachel as well.
Yeah, that too, yeah, I'll copy her, I'll see. Um, yeah, and I would just make a suggestion, if you, Ma- Matthew to you especially, and and Anne, and, um. Just send an email to, um, your committees, just letting them know your new assignments and.
And they're listed on the website, the committees and the committee.
I could, you know what, I'll, you know, I'll do it like an introductory.
Yeah, well, I I still, I still need to get with the technology, as a counselor, my email and all that stuff, I don't, I'm not up to speed with.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know, I don't.
Actually, we're, we're gonna work on onboarding you for that.
Yeah.
Do we have, uh, does someone have a, um. Contacts list of all the committee members?
That's what I was, I don't think.
We have had one, but it does fluctuate. There was one maintained in the clerk's office.
Cause we might be able to just tap into that and then send a copy of this with just kind of a general, council's got a new year and just send it out to everybody?
Yeah.
Is that sound possible?
The list we have may be a little out of date, but yes.
Okay. We need to update, we'll need to update the websites anyways, so.
Just looking at who, so Marty, you're basically all the same as last year. Dan, you are.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much the same.
The same. I'm the same minus resiliency, so I, I mean, I can just send an email to resiliency about Anne taking over. Um, and then I'll, I'll just, yeah, I'll send an email to Matthew's committees and Anne's committees, just notifying them.
I think perhaps, maybe the liaison to the committee, maybe what we should do is take on responsibility for. For taking sort of a role and coming up with a list and making sure that we have contact information for everybody on our committees. And then we could give that to Nate.
Mm-hmm.
And they could update their list, and that might save the staff a little bit of time searching, I don't know what you think of that, but. Since we're going to all these meetings anyways, we could just check in with everybody and say, you know.
That would. That would help.
Yeah.
You know, can you just jot down your name and contact information, so we can just update our records?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
That's a good idea. Yeah, so if all of us can just ask our, um, respective committee members to just provide their contact information, whether it's email or phone or both.
At the first meeting.
At the first meeting, yeah, and then we can relay that to staff.
Mm-hmm. And and who do we, should we send it to Nate or?
Yeah, or to Britt.
I would, yeah, I'm gonna send an email to her.
To Britt? Okay, so she'll know it's coming, so it's not just like a surprise, okay. Yeah, so send it to, um, Britt Barton, the town clerk.
So name, phone, and email.
Yeah.
To Britt. B R I T T.
Yes.
Okay, Anne, thank you for sticking around slash coming up to the podium, and for taking on all those committees. Um, okay, so, we had a motion by Dan and a second by Marty, uh. I don't, I don't know how to phrase this though, cause it's like, it's not as amended.
The liaison list as amended.
As amended, okay, so, yeah, um, are you, everyone okay with that change as amended?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Okay, next, number eight. Uh, to review and act upon authorizing the treasurer to set off monies due against taxes. Do I have my motion?
So moved?
Second.
Counsel, this is a perfunctory language that we are required to, uh, use by main revenue services, so, um. The the motion language can't really be modified and, uh, it's it's really an up or down vote for you.
Can you just go into a little bit of background as to what this pertains to for folks that don't know?
Sure, this this has to do with the payment of personal property taxes, and it would just make sh- it would just make sure that, um. We're allowed to use that money, apply it directly to the personal property taxes, and it doesn't get used for any other purpose.
And personal property is.
For like, uh, if a business has equipment, um, that they, you know, they they register as part of their taxable property plan and equipment for property tax purposes. Um, that's the personal property that we're talking about, it's anything but real estate.
I think, you know, uh, uh, people might wonder that it pertains to them, it's not your residential personal.
It's not your seventy-three Les Paul deluxe.
Yeah, or your barbecue.
Or your barbecue.
Certainly hope we're not going after taxes or barbecue, but.
Just don't want people to come out with their pitchforks, thinking that we're after their personal property.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, um, so, can I get a vote, uh, Matthew?
Um, just, so I understand, I mean, you say, I mean, that personal property tax money goes into the, into the general fund, right, or?
Sorry?
Correct, this is business property, pers- personal property tax, yeah, then that goes into the general fund as revenue.
I understand that. Yes, I I'm in favor.
Yes, okay for Matthew. Um, Marty?
Yes.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, um. Okay, I will read this whole thing. Um, looking for a motion to review and approve the town manager's expenditure limits. Per the town of Gray, town charter, article three, the powers and duties of the town manager shall include section two dot H. Act as purch- purchasing agent for all departments of the town and submit to competitive bids any transaction in excess of an amount to be determined on an annual basis by the town council. The bidding process shall be defined in the town administrative code. All accounts for the purchase of supplies and materials and work performed for said town shall bear the approval of the town manager. The town manager's expenditure limits are established in the town of Gray fiscal policy, last revised and adopted by the Gray Town Council on March seventh, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve the Gray Town Council, or for, do I have a motion for the Gray Town Council approve the, to approve the town manager's expenditure limits?
So move.
Second.
Counsel, um, the only difference between, that I would just like to point out, the only distinction between this year and last year, and this is again the perfunctory language that we approve every year. Is that it does ident- or at least in the preamble, I did identify that you've updated the fiscal policy and there are spending limits. That, um, even for budgeted items, uh, if a, if a budgeted item, um, hits the thresholds required for competitive bidding. That the, uh, the department heads and I will need to follow that and make sure that, um, we're following that process when we present, uh, proposals to you. Similar to the ones that were presented this evening for paving bids and such.
Anyone have any comments? Go ahead, Dan.
So, I was curious, Nate, the town administrative code, um, I couldn't find.
There, yeah, it's funny, I was, I was gonna mention that. There are these vague references to town administrative code. It's not a noun, it's sort of an adjective, it's 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 a, it's a broad term to define any of the. Documents that we use to set the policies and procedures of the town government.
So are we calling it the right thing?
Uh, um, yes.
Cause it makes, it makes it sound like there's a document.
I, when I was look, when I was gonna apply for this job, I kept looking for the town administrative code, I couldn't find it, I'm like, oh, God, uh, uh, but it doesn't exist. As a thing, it doesn't exist. Uh, uh, but it doesn't exist as a thing. It doesn't exist.
So.
It's a set of things.
So the fiscal policy would be part of that?
Is part of, yes.
What would the other pieces of that?
Like personnel?
Well, like personnel policies, your policy, um, any other policy document that is on, like, for example, that is on the website that dictates any of the regular functions of the town.
I wonder if we could just define it as that and put.
Yeah, actually, list, uh, list the documents that it entails that you define.
I, I'm not sure there's a better term for it than Town Administrative Code, but I think defining Town Administrative Code somewhere, perhaps in the Council Rules or somewhere like that.
Yeah, I mean, even if there was on the website, there is, you know, Town Administrative Codes, and then underneath it, we just list those that are, we just put links for those that would apply, maybe.
If we renamed the policy page of the website to Town Administrative Code, it would basically be that.
Maybe that. I mean, I don't know which is better to do, whether to, we ditch the term Town Administrative Code or whether that's.
Again, I can't think of a better term for it. Like, as an umbrella term, I'm not sure what, what, what else we would call it. I'm certainly open, sure.
No, I, I.
Open to suggestion.
Yeah, I'm looking for the easiest one.
I think it's just important that, that it's clear what it entails.
Right.
Maybe, maybe, um, we can define it with, I mean, when, the only time we reference it is in this vote, correct?
It's, it's referred to in various documents, um, in the, and I think the Charter even refers to it, but again, it's not, it has not been defined at all, much less clearly. It's just sort of accepted language.
So if we were to add a definition somewhere, we would also need to add it in the Charter, which would require an amendment?
Not necessarily. Uh, from, as a functional thing, so I'm under the government heading on the Gray May website. If you go to Policies slash Guidelines, and my computer's gonna die any second now. Basically, everything under Policies and Guidelines constitutes the Town's Administrative Code. We may wanna add, you know, like the Town Council rules if it's not in here. Yeah, it is in here.
It's in here.
This, this is, this page is.
Well, perhaps we should rename this page the Town Administrative.
Yeah, or, or, or do like a all so known as Town Administrative Code.
Yeah.
That might even be more illustrative.
So the Policies and Guidelin- basically we'll just rename Policies and Guidelines.
Or I might, I might have it both on there, but.
Yeah, or you could put, the Policies and Guidelines could be like a sub, sub, subtitle.
I mean, that might be dense on the, on the navigation window, but it, it makes sense as a, as a header on the page.
Okay, we'll, we'll find one way or the other to skim that.
Yeah, I, I just think, um, and again, I think that this is more of us just trying to make sure that we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed, and that we link all of these things together so that when people look for them, they don't bump into a dead end or.
I was actually gonna suggest that to insert like a hyperlink in the document or something, if you know where it is online. Town Administrative Code, what's that? Click.
Yeah, well, now it would take you right to here, because it would be part of the title.
Right.
Yep.
I'll, uh, I will ask that we just update the Policy and Guideline page to include that text, just like a, also referred to as the Town Administrative Code.
Yeah, it could be the subtitle.
Yeah.
People probably would look for Policies and Guidelines before they looked for a Town Administrative.
Yeah, and, and once it's on the webpage, it will show up in a search.
Yeah.
Maybe not the town search.
Honestly, I find it really difficult to understand what would be under Policies and Guidelines. Like, I was looking for the fee schedule recently for this packet, in fact, and I had to just do it in the search, because I couldn't for the life of me find where the fee schedule was, but now I'm seeing it's right. It's right here, um.
Yeah, so all the more reason to identify it as Town's Administrative Code.
Any more discussion around that?
Uh, no. The fee schedules under the Community Development, which I think is also a little, you know, people, we refer to it as the Planning Department more than we refer to it as Community Development. I think the Community Development title is important. But, um, because it's, it's comprised of planning assessing.
Yeah, we have the Development Office, right, but then the Planning Department.
I honestly think that, and I don't know what the solution is, but I do think somehow we have to come to grips with our website, not only from the search function, but from the bazillion revisions of documents that are out there. You know, if you go and you look for the twenty twenty-four budget, and you go to our twenty twenty-four budget page, and you see the seventy-six documents that are on the page, somehow we've gotta, um, simplify this process. I went to Bridgestone's website, and I was amazed at how simple that website is in comparison to ours.
Um.
They're relatively, in their community, they must be about the same size as us, so. I think it's something, and there's an expense to it, I know that's the case, but I think it's worth talking about.
I'm just, I'm not sure, I agree that we could definitely use some updating on our website, um, here and there, um, or probably a lot of it, but, um, I don't know, Nate, do you feel like that's something that the Council needs to work on, or is that just an action item for you and staff?
So I'll just, so I just went to the Bridgestone main website, and I just typed in comprehensive, oh, I spelled it wrong. Comprehensive plan on their search thing, and it comes back with agendas and, and, uh, updates and different things. It's sort of not sorted. The problem that we have is this is the proprietary software, and we can't fix it. We can grouse at the vendor until they try to sort it out, but, which is probably what we'll do. But, um, each of these town websites, and I've worked on like three different ones, including a proprietary one, they all have their own quirks, and I've never seen a great search engine on a single one of them yet. I'm sure it's out there.
I think to Dan's point, though, it's not just the search feature, which could use, it's the structure and also how we label things, um. We need to be editing the type of content. I, I understand, this is not a derogatory comment towards Kyle's work, for sure.
Not a criticism of.
But it's just how we've always done things, like the, like the budget page is just, as Dan was saying, full of content, but it's really hard to sift through all that. I mean, I have a hard time sifting through it, so I can't imagine with someone coming to it uneducated about all the things we've talked about must feel like when they stumble on the budget page, so I think we need to, um, decide how we're, what the types of things we're putting on the website and how they get done a li- a little better, but I, but, but again, I come back to whether that's really a conversation for Council, or that's really a staff work or item.
So this is, yeah, this is part of some of the work we've been doing in the department heads meetings, and with Kyle, uh, sat in on our last one, we're, we're talking more about the structure of the town government, and what it means to like work in a department that is part of, you know, thirteen different department heads, and what does it mean to come together as a town government and deliver those services as a group. Part of capturing that is capturing it in the structure of the website, and make, and putting the material into logical groupings that uh, if somebody's going to get a permit, if they go to a webpage, they should be able to get all the material they need to help them with their permitting. If they wanna know about the fee schedule, they ought to be able to find that in the Town's Administrative Code. So we're working on that. I think the website is substantially better with Kyle's work over the last, over the last year plus, and it's an iterative process, but we recognize that there are frustrations and limitations to the website, and we, we have been working on it, and, uh, we hope that you see those improvements over time. But this is a good conversation, because it's part of that understanding the way that the town government really works and operates from the perspective of citizens, the users who come here looking for things.
We, we, oh, I'm sorry.
And, and I just wanna add one more thing. We're putting together a survey uh, to send out to Gray residents and citizens about how they access, um, our website, how they find resources about the town, where they get their news about the town from, so that's another thing to look out for in the next month or so.
Do you think, um, talking about it in like a workshop format with the Council would be worthwhile, or do you wanna hold off until?
Why don't I talk with town staff and ask what the best form of, um, guidance would be?
Okay.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, I, I bring it up because, to be honest with you, I think there's a budgetary component to it. So I guess towards that end, um.
Not for this year.
It's not for this year, for sure, and it's probably a multi-year effort, to be honest with you. We had, uh, and I, Ann might remember, I don't know, we had a different website, and four or five years ago, I think it was, um, it went through a rewrite, and it changed significantly the structure of it. Um, I would imagine Kyle's probably got access to those previous iterations of it. I don't know, but, um.
Some of it we set on fire and floated off down the river.
Yeah. So anyways, okay, that just, I just raised.
I will ask, we have regular branding and outreach meetings, so we'll talk about it.
Um, just as an aside, if you want just individual Council input, I, when I was at, um, L L B, and I worked on web content and the structure of their website, so I know it's not directly related, but I'm happy to have input if you feel like it's.
Thank you.
Um.
While, while we're talking about that, I guess I would also ask about the calendar. I know there's certain things that are on Facebook, but like, like the Community Day is not on the town calendar, or upcoming events, or, you know, and I know when I've thought, you know, when I, you know, it's been hard to find things that aren't just the regularly scheduled meetings on the calendar, and and if we're interested in promoting those things, I mean, I don't know if I'm weird or what, but like, if I'm wondering about the Community Day, I would go to the town website, and, and just now I looked at, you know, like, and it didn't jump out at me, maybe you could find it, but.
We, we, no, it's not on there, because we were waiting on the finalized schedule and haven't gotten it yet, so.
Right, I, well, just, I think we did agree earlier that the Community Day portion was gonna go ahead, um, from ten to one, and then we will reschedule volunteer portion. Um. We're, we're voting on town managers expenditure, so we kinda got a little off track there. Um, okay, let's take a vote on that. Uh, you have one more thing?
Well, yeah, I, sorry, I'm the one that am responsible for dragging you off. But I did have, um, we're talking about, I just lost it. Uh, packet page thirty-seven, correct? That's the, that's what we're discussing now, essentially. Packet page thirty-seven and the top of packet page.
Yes, that's.
Thirty-eight, okay. Um, I just had a question, um, on the five thousand and one to fifteen thousand dollar range. Says quotations will be solicited from a minimum of three qualified bidders, if available, and my question was, what happens if they're not available?
We take two, or if we can't get more than one, we take one, and we bring it to you under the sole sourcing or single sourcing provision.
Okay.
In some cases, there is just like one vendor, like we've got one guy who's a trapper.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
So in that case, I would come and say, I got, we got one guy who's a trapper, can, can we use that?
It's not, it's, yeah, I'm, I guess I'm wondering is that it leaves open the question of what's the next step, and I wondered if that should be in here. I don't think it precludes us from, from giving you permission to do that.
Yeah, three qualified bidders, if available, the quotes, I think, I don't, I, I feel like that's clear.
All right, then let's.
If it's okay, I'm happy to make amendments if.
My only other comment was, I feel like the five thousand and one, the fifteen thousand dollar level, and the fifteen thousand to forty thousand dollar, that there's really no difference between those two. And maybe I'm not understanding the nuance of.
Um, under five thousand, it's, um.
Under five thousand, the staff will solicit bids from, from people. They'll proactively go out and ask for a bid. On the next level, fifteen to forty, we, we would ask for extended proposals that, rather than just a bid. Like, like a response to a.
We're not just calling around and asking people.
Okay, so the first one is verbal and the second one is written. Yeah, got you, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Anything else, Dan?
Nope, that's it.
Does anyone have any other comments? Okay, uh, let's take a vote. Um, Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Thank you.
Next up is to review and act upon approving the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four fee schedule.
Which is on page forty-six.
Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second it.
Okay. Where was that? Packet page, what did you say? Sorry.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Sorry about the cutoff, uh, format and the printed version, but the version on the website, uh, package should show up properly.
So, um, when I was working on the packet with John, um.
John did make those edits, I think.
Yeah, so I identified some edits that needed to be made, um, for our recently voted on, um, Z B A fee, application fee adjustments, which were on packet page fifty-two. Those were previously three hundred, now they say five hundred. Um, and then on packet page fifty-six, we had updated the Planning Board Staff Review Committee fee schedules recently, um, and those are, I believe these are accurate. The only other thing on this that's not really a fee is that there's crossed out redlined items on packet page forty-eight that we should just delete in this version.
Yeah, we had trouble digging up the, we don't have the, we have the PDF, we don't have the.
Oh, okay.
We need to, we're trying to find the original version, so we could edit it.
Okay. Um, did we indeed lower the fees for, um, the library copying black and white pages to twenty-five cents from fifty? That, I didn't know if that was a.
I don't recall.
And then that doesn't seem familiar to me, but I'm fine with it being twenty-five cents, um. I don't know if anyone else noticed any things they wanted to call out on here. I, I, as I said, I believe they're all.
I have a suggestion in the formatting, that's my only thought, is to put the fees uh, uh, on the left margin so that you're not going across the whole page to find them.
I like that.
I think that would make it a lot easier to navigate. But that's, you know, you can decide on that. I think that when you start there and you have to kinda stay within the line and go all the way across the page, it's, it's rather difficult. I find it difficult to read, but anyways, that was my only formatting thought. These are the, yeah, so.
Nope.
No, just, you didn't have any edits on the fee?
No, you've answered my question as to the other, other.
Yeah, because a lot of these are proposed changes I think we've made prior, the redlined items or the, what, the items in red that just need to be incorporated into the document.
We did make that, adopt that for the library.
Um, so, did anyone else have any comments on the fee? Okay, let's take a vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Number eleven, to review and act upon approving the mobile vendor license for Lonnie Humphrey doing business as Lonnie Dogs.
So moved.
Second. Happy to second this, and I appreciate, appreciated Mr. Boyle's humor.
I was, I was gonna make some, I don't know if he's, if he's a dad or not, but it seemed kind of like a dad joke to me.
I'm glad he relishes the opportunity to let Lonnie. When you're on page sixty-six of the Council packet, I, 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 sixty-five, I, I appreciate it coming into that.
Okay, um, yeah, we welcome Mr. Humphrey back. He's certainly an institution in town, so.
Sixty years or forty years or something like that, I'm surprised.
Yeah, um, Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Okay, uh, next up is, oh, I thought we took this off, report from the Council Chair.
Oh, uh, we left that in there just in case you might have any comments you'd wanna make.
Um. Nothing related, unrelated to my committees, I guess. Did, did, I'm just trying to think if any emails came in that, um. Well, we do have, and, oh, actually, we should discuss something, just, um, which is not, we should talk about, um, workshop, scheduling some workshops. Um, typically, we would go off the list that Sandy has shared with me, um, for items we've logged as discussion items, but I think what's most pressing, I hope everyone agrees, is, um, discussing um, the failed budget and how we're going to address that going forward, um. Um, so Nate and I were talking and I think we agreed to at least start with two workshops. And then if we need more for that, we can add more. Are you, are you okay with that, Nate?
Yeah, that's great. I think one to get all the ideas out and then another to come back and review after we've had a chance. Go in and update the figures and then continue tweaking until you're satisfied with.
And we did check in with Alyssa about what we're required to do, um. It sounds like there's no set date for the town meeting that we need to host, we can kind of choose when would be best. But until that time, staff is operating under what was approved under last year's budget.
Right.
So they can't go above the amounts that were approved last year. Um, and that also means we can't move forward with any like new projects that would cost additional funds. Um, regarding the items that were, there were some i- warrant items that were approved, um, and others that weren't. Um. Alyssa, the lawyer, did say that we, we could, we could treat those two different ways. We could, we could revisit the whole budget regardless of what was approved, or we could decide to keep the things that were approved as is. But since LD-one failed, technically, the whole budget failed. I was in favor of at least leaving the approval of the bond in place because I feel like that's really separate from the operating budget. Um, but again, this is all conversations we can have at a workshop. So I'm just looking for, perhaps, I don't, I don't know if it'd be easier just to decide here for me to send out a poll with people's availability. Okay. Um, what's today, the twentieth?
I'm free tomorrow.
I'm not. Um, would, would anyone be available next week or is that too soon, Nate?
Sure.
What's?
Um, I won't be here cause I'll be on vacation.
Oh, you'll be on, when do you get back?
You can meet without me, but it might be more productive. I get back on the fifth of July. I will be at work on Wednesday, July the fifth.
Okay, perhaps we should wait then until you return, um.
I won't be available that week.
That week you're out.
July.
Okay. Um.
I'm not available after that, so.
Right, you're traveling, so, yeah.
Should we shoot for something this week?
Um, I will be, um, Wednesday, tomorrow is the town. Training day, Thursday, I will be in Orno for a conference and I will not be available Thursday evening or Friday.
Yeah, it, right. Um, Anne, when, when are you unavailable, all of July or?
Yeah.
No, no, that's fine. Well, in that case, we should make sure Matthew is here, so what about the week of July tenth? What are people, Wednesday's not great for me, but any other day is fine, probably.
Yeah, evening meeting.
Uh, yeah. Unless we can, I mean, I don't know what your schedule's like, Matthew, sometimes we meet at like four o'clock.
Oh, um, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Would four o'clock's meetings work for you occasionally or?
That's fine with me, I'm all five days.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
You can say no, that's okay, they're not.
No, I mean, I, this seems important enough that, I mean, generally, I wouldn't like to meet that early, but, you know, we need to get this going.
Right.
There are no meetings scheduled that I see that entire week, uh, in the evenings.
In the evenings, okay.
And it's always, Thursday's always a popular night for staff to have meetings, but we are working around your schedule, whatever works for you all.
I'm fine with Thursday evening. Dan, are you available?
Thursday to thirteenth?
Thursday to thirteen?
Um, yeah, I'm checking.
Okay. How about you, Matthew?
Looks like I'm a bit.
Okay.
Four o'clock to thirteen, finally.
Well, we could do five if that's better, whatever people.
I prefer five.
Five, okay.
That's the thirteen.
How are you looking, Dan?
Um, I'll say yes.
Okay. Okay, so let's say five o'clock on the thirteen.
All right. Can the second meeting be on the twentieth?
You have nothing scheduled that evening.
I mean.
We have the eighteenth, we have our meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, yeah, that's fine with me. Can you guys do the eighteenth?
Mm-hmm, well, that's the, the council, oh, yeah, but like before that?
No, that.
Before the council meeting?
Sorry, not the eighteenth, the twentieth.
Yeah, that's fine.
I meant to say the twenty, right?
Yes. I suggested the twentieth, that would give a week between meetings.
Five o'clock or four?
Five, it's something like.
Five o'clock, Nate says.
Well, oh, no, it's whatever you all want, sorry.
Well, I don't know, I, we can do.
I would prefer five.
Five, okay.
Um, but we're talking about the.
July twentieth.
Twentieth. Yes, that's fine.
Five o'clock, okay.
Yep.
Okay, um, and then I guess we can just start there and then.
Play by ear, right?
Play by ear. Um. What was Alyssa saying in regards to town meeting, like the timing, she said, she said we weren't bound by a date, we just needed to notice it seven days in.
And the articles, the warrant articles have to be published no later than seven days in it, no, earlier, later than seven, earlier than seven days in advance. You have to allow seven days between the publishing of the warrant articles and the, the town meeting.
When this budget failed in twenty twenty, the vote was held in September, I'm trying to remember.
It failed twice.
It did?
Yeah. I believe.
I think it was just once, LD-one, LD-one failed and then we just redid LD, I wasn't on the council, but I remember voting.
Okay, I could be mixing up my histories here.
Yeah, but I was just trying to remember.
Yeah.
Trying to remember the timeline, um, I think it was September.
It was September.
It was September.
It was on the more, more.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think if that's unreasoned, cause it's just looking at the summer schedule, I don't think we're gonna get it done before September, I don't, I just.
Well, and I wonder if we want to, I mean, ideally, we want the most people that we can get to come out, come out, and if we have it in the summer.
Nobody's gonna be here.
I just wonder if, you know, it'll be crickets, which I don't.
Right, I mean, the other problem with September is it's always a hard time for.
Cause you got back to school.
Back to school, and I, you wanna make sure all generations show up to, to vote, not just.
It's probably going to have to be a Saturday.
I think it should be a Saturday.
What about the last Saturday in August, the twenty-sixth, as a target?
A lot of, when's, when's Labor Day this year?
Labor Day is, uh, the fourth of September. So it would be a whole weekend.
September the second, oh, that's Labor Day weekend. Probably not ideal. There's September ninth.
I think that's a horrible week for people, like I just.
The sixteenth is your workshop, the twenty-third, I am out of town. About the time of the thirtieth.
Look at the district calendar too, so they start. First student day is the fifth.
Yeah, that's why I thought the ninth would be bad.
Is the week before that bad? Last minute scrambling, back to school stuff.
And that, that would be Labor Day.
Last, oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't mind the sound of the twenty-sixth, uh, it's, I just worry people might still be on vacation or.
Well, it's soon enough that we can put it out there that people, you know. I, I don't know, I, I don't think we have to set it in cement tonight.
No, I don't.
Because I don't know what our deliberations are gonna.
Right.
Require. Um, I don't mind setting it tentatively, but I worry a little bit about doing something. I think it'd almost be better to not have a date than to put something out tentatively and then end up changing it and causing some confusion.
Yeah, I, I also agree with that. Yeah, let, okay, let's just stick with our workshops in July and then we'll.
Go from there.
Go from there. We might need more workshops, for all we know, so.
Yeah, I think that, I think I feel most comfortable with that approach.
That sounds good.
Myself.
Okay, well, I didn't, I don't think I had any other updates as chair, um, I did have committee updates, as a non-chair. Um, which, I will do that after your update, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so council for my report, uh, you've received my report. I wanna check with you and see if you have any questions about that. You also received a copy of the expense and revenue budget, I gave you revised version of the expense budget today. And I also sent you a note about the revenue budget, we're working on getting a revised report on that and I'll send it to you. Britt will send it to you as soon as we have it.
So this one we got tonight is now.
That is correct, it has just, it has the revenues, but it doesn't have it with a correct year-to-date column next to it. I wanna get you a better format of that, so those numbers are usable.
So the, those were la- la- FY twenty-three numbers?
No, these are the current up-to-date, as far as I understand, year-to-date, as of the last time we were able to get figures for.
The revenue, the revenue ones, year-to-date.
Revenue ones, yeah, correct, and the expense report is year-to-date also.
One of, yeah, one of the things, yeah.
So the expense report is, I just printed it for you because, uh, the way it prints landscape and the, the way we upload the documents, it tends to cut stuff off.
When you say year-to-date, do you mean fiscal year-to-date or calendar year-to-date?
That is what we have spent up until today versus the budgeted amount, that's, that's.
So it's all fiscal, it's all fiscal.
Yeah, it's all fiscal, yeah, from, from July one of last year to whenever the report date was.
Okay.
So that's in there, uh, you've received, as normally you do, the department reports and there's also a ComStar report in there from the sheriff's office. So, I, if you have any questions about my report, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just had, I just had one quick question, um, on your written report on bullet number three under June eighth, where you were.
Mm-hmm.
Um, attending the AARP main livability conference, you referenced that the town of Gray has an AARP affiliated age-friendly group. Is that the lifelong living committee?
That's correct, yeah.
And is that active again? Cause I knew, I know it was kind of missing, defunct slash missing.
We had a M-dash meeting today with, uh, main council on aging and there was one citizen member, uh, present from Gray. So I would say that that, that one citizen is an active Gray citizen who's enthusiastic about the livability work, the age-friendly work. But it's another committee of one.
Yeah, I'm concerned about them representing themselves as a, a person representing themselves as that committee for the town of Gray.
She's really not, she's really just sort of, it's a plight of, we'd like, we have things we started, we wanna keep working on. So it's really a staff committee at this point, talking about, we talked about transportation. We're trying to come up with some homegrown transportation alternatives for Gray. Uh, but, but it would be great to have a town-affiliated council committee on livability or age-friendliness. Uh, it's just something for y'all to consider, there's nothing stopping the town from adopting such.
Since we can't staff the committees we have, I'm hesitant to create another one, especially one that's specific.
Yeah.
This may fall in under resiliency and CEDC.
Yeah.
Um, it's, there's a lot of tie-ins around transportation and economic development. So I'd like to continue working on the transportation question, cause it's a budget item, but whether it happens under the auspice of an age-friendly committee is.
I mean, one thing that, um, an age-friendly committee could do would be recruit volunteers to help with, um, maintenance of. Um, our seniors' homes and, and properties, um, which I don't think would really be under the charge of resiliency or CEDC. But, um, I agree with Anne that we just, creating another committee might be the wrong way to go at this point, given our volunteer constraints. But I, I do think this type of work is crucial to the livability for our town. So I don't, I don't wanna overlook it by not creating a committee, I just wanna make sure we capture it in other places.
Is, on our, um, looking at the resilience, I, I guess, looking at the resilience committee's webpage on our site. I don't feel like what we're talking about now is in there.
Well, I think transportation would be, as a, the, the last bullet, this came, this actually came up in our committee meeting the other day, um. Let me find it, um, the, on, in the charge, the last, I think that the last bullet under duties talks about encouraging partnerships and collaborations. With other towns to develop regional approaches and I think transportation definitely could fit under that.
But anything could fit there, and that's way too, that's way too, um, undefined, I guess, from my, s- my point of view.
Well, there's a lot of momentum, um, from some of the surveys and interviews we've done, both with resiliency. And I think CEDC also had a similar business with their business forum, they had with business, local businesses. Where transportation definitely came up as a item people would like to work towards.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's all well and great, but I don't think the committee can just change its charge or expand its charge. I think they need to negotiate that with the council.
Right, well, that's something I was gonna bring up later as part of my committee, meaning, um, committee reports.
If I can, I'd like, I'd just like to make a pitch for this coming in under the CEDC committee, it's community economic development. And when it comes to housing, we know that that's a, a keystone to the, the, the economy question anywhere, especially in Gray. Looking at ways to provide universal housing for Gray residents who are in houses that need some modifications so they can stay there. Is, uh, the other side of the coin of looking for affordable housing for older people who wanna stay in Gray. And then the, um, question about transportation is inextricably linked from a housing question, so. Since you've budgeted for some collaboration with RTP, who were prominently on the call today. And we're trying to work with DOT on their transportation shuttle system, um, trying to find multiple solutions to try to meet as many of the needs in Gray as we can. I'd like for it to go somewhere, I, I think CEDC is a place it could go, but I defer to council on how you would like to structure that work. We're gonna do the work one way or the other until you tell me not to, but it would be nice to have some citizen input somewhere.
I think unfortunately, that's one of the possible cuts. Um, I also think, I'm not sure where that charge comes from, the idea of housing for, I don't sure exactly how you phrased it, but.
Housing and transportation are, they're, you can't talk about one without talking about the other, from an economic development standpoint.
Yeah, but you expanded that to include like housing for.
Oh, like, for example, the Avesta housing expansion and the other questions about livability and affordable housing in Gray. I just take that as a subset of that as part of our work.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's a, I don't see that explicitly in that, uh, in the rest of that conversation.
I think it's probably implicit in the LD two thousand and three, um, housing mandate stuff for the work we're doing at the planning department.
Yeah, see, that's one of the things that concerns me is the creep, I mean, we have a, we have a fixed amount of time. And we have a lot of things that we, that we're trying to get done. And I'm concerned that we're leaking time into all these other things and not focusing on the, the main work.
It's a huge challenge.
That's one example.
LD two thousand and three is a massive hiccup and unfunded mandate that is affecting the way that we look at all of our zoning questions that came up. Since last October, we've shifted our approach to that.
But beyond meeting the letter of the law, I, I don't think that we should go any further.
Yeah, and I'm just talking about meeting the letter of the law, yeah, we, we really are struggling.
But transportation isn't a part of the, isn't a part of that.
It, it's showing up in the bills that are going to the legislature as being linked into that. But from a standpoint of how should the town approach LD two thousand and three? Uh, we certainly can pivot toward just doing a minimalist approach to the ADUs and, uh, minimum dwelling units on residential lots. We, we might just miss some of the richness of the conversation if we do, it's a good conversation.
It is, but I guess we, you know, what about all the ordinance work that we're not getting done? What about the zoning changes for the comp plan? I mean, I, I just think that I'm concerned about losing control of our own agenda. And so I personally am all for doing the absolute bare minimum that has to do with the ADU law at this point in time. Just because we don't have the horses to do all the other stuff that's on our list.
I think this might be a really good conversation for our retreat, um, just because I think we're talking about priorities and goals and we could go on.
That's two months away. Two plus months away.
Yeah, well, what are you looking to prioritize right now specifically? Yeah, well, what are you looking to prioritize right now specifically in?
Well, look at our task list.
Yeah.
It's right there. I mean, we've already set the priorities and, and some of this stuff isn't on that list. Or if it's on the list, it's not the top of the list.
You're talking about transportation specifically? I just wanna.
I'm talking about the council's task list.
Okay, yeah.
And when you look at our task list and you look at the priorities there, transportation's on the list, but it's not, it's not in the top ten. So, uh, I guess that's my point. We created that list that we would come to agreement that that would be the priority work that we would do. And I'm beginning to feel like other stuff is trumping that list. And that's a concern of mine because that's undercutting the, the purpose and the goals of that list.
I don't think you're wrong, I just don't know how we get into the meat of. Well, I mean, I know we prioritized it, but I don't know how that's affecting Nate's day-to-day work, I guess, without us, without direction.
It's not a huge amount of sta- it's very little staff time, not a huge amount of my time. Uh, it's just born out of, there was a lot of conversation about transportation during the budget hearings this year. So it, it seemed like this was a priority for council, um, and that's why we've been working on it.
Right, I mean, we did, we were considering that bus, the bus route to Wyndham, but we cut that before we knew we needed to cut more things, so.
Yeah, but it's, it's a small, I mean, it's, it's not even a tenth of a percent of the whole budget. Anyways, and I may, you know, the, I may be the outlier here, but that, that, it is a concern. I feel like there is, other things are taking priority over our work and we're not having a conversation about that.
I, I, I agree that's true in some circumstances. I'm not sure transportation in particular is one that's overtaking.
I don't know, I'm not part of the meeting, I don't have much time spent on it. I just express my concern, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're worried.
And the only other item I have is that the planning department would like to advocate for a wel- workshop on the selfs, excuse me, the self-storage unit, um, um, ordinance revisions before you go to first reading. So if, as you're assembling your workshop schedule, you're, you're doing budget workshops, if you find room perhaps, uh, before the next town council meeting or the, when the, the meeting's in August, uh, to schedule a workshop to review self-storage, uh, the planning department would appreciate it.
We haven't set a date for first reading again on that, right?
Correct. There were some speculative dates, but we haven't set an official date. And that is all I have.
Okay, um, next up is committee reports. Um, Dan, do you wanna start?
Uh, yes, um. Let's see, hang on a second. Finance committee did meet, um, since we last met, um, and had some conversation, Nate related some things onto us and that work sort of continues. There's not really a big update on that. Um, planning board hasn't met since last we met. Um, I guess that wraps up my report.
Okay, um, Marty?
The zoning board will not have a meeting in June. Uh, Community Day is this Saturday, June twenty-fourth. Ice cream, hot dogs, et cetera. The Wild Blueberry Festival Committee met today. We had a workshop off-site, worked on lawn signs and banners, and Dan covered the finance committee and the planning committee. And that's all that's up.
Um, Matthew, I imagine you don't have many committee reports. Um, okay, I'd just like to report on the GP COG Executive Committee is, um, adjourned for the summer and will reconvene in September. Um, the OAC met on June fifteenth, uh, over Zoom where we discussed, uh, several things that I would like to find. Um, I'm trying to remember what the. Oh, right, we, uh, we discussed, discussed option, uh, discussed options for reduced depth be- um, depth use separation. I think both from the street and between buildings, particularly for the village. Uh, there was a good conversation around that. Um, I think, um, members were open to, uh, having, uh, not having much setback um, from the street in the village, um, and also I think we needed to get input more from the fire chief about, um, between buildings. But they, they were open to, um, maybe creating some, some alleyways that were, um, meant for like pedestrians. Um, so not, we, I think the way our ordinances are written right now re- require much more separation in the village than, um, we're looking to, um, use going forward. And, and there was consensus with those in attendance that that made sense. Uh, we also reviewed the proposal from Doug about the interim growth overlay district um, to implement LD two thousand and three, uh, where he's going to take the land use map from the comprehensive plan, particularly for the village, and overlay it with our current zoning to identify a, a growth area for implementing LD oh-three and then also for implementing potentially comprehensive plan updates to our zoning going forward. Um, the committee members were on, on board with that approach. They had some input regarding. Um, I informed them of council input about, and Doug did also, about, um, excluding the wellheads and also Dan's concern about the portion of the growth area that had both commercial and residential, um, uses um, in what is now primarily a kind of manufacturing part of town. They also had some concern, Dan, about eliminating the small percentage of town that was exclusively commercial. Um, but we didn't really settle on what that would look like for that growth area. So I think that's something we should discuss further as a council. Um, in regards to the wellhead, um, they were. I, I believe Doug might, well, he's not here anymore, but, um, I believe they were in favor of removing wellhead one ex- um, entirely. Um, there was some talk around what that would mean for wellhead two. Um, they weren't sold on taking that out. But, um, they, recognizing that wellhead one is a concern for our, the quality of our water. Um, so not, not misaligned with how the council was meaning, so that was good to hear that, um, we were on the right track. Um, we also discussed, um, multifamily performance standards, um, establishing those. Uh, we didn't really settle on anything more than what the council had discussed and I think we're just gonna talk about it again next time. Um, Resiliency Committee did meet on June eighth. Um, we do not have a quorum, but we did have a good conversation. Um, Matthew, um, was going, we talked about recruitment, cause we're missing members. Matthew was going to put out a letter to the editor. Maybe, or he will. Um, and we're going to be coordinating with, um, reaching out to GCTV to talk about how we might utilize that for recruitment. Um, we also will be hosting a booth at Gray Community Day where we're going to have, um, some polling regarding our charge and what people think are important. Also some materials related to the Community Resilience Partnership for people to look at and some interactive things for kids. And then I wanted to propose, um, a potential workshop item that came up. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the Community Resilience Partnership, um, work that we've engaged with two oh seven, two oh seven permaculture on. Um, is, is, we've done a lot of, um, did some surveys, we've done interviews. We hosted, um, a community workshop in April? Was it April or May, Matthew? I can't remember. I think it was April. We had really good attendance and feedback around that. Um, next up is, um, for the council to pass a resolution and also to identify, help identify priorities that, um, we've had received input from to continue this work. Um, and so we were hoping to have a collaborative meeting that potentially included department heads or members of other committees, particularly open space, um, and CEDC. Um, just to get some feedback on where we are and what others might feel are priority areas for potential, um, projects that we could apply for grants for. Um, I think Rachel was hoping to host this um, as a, both a presentation and a prioritization activity. Um, but she said she would certainly be willing to update council just without the, without the, um, activity also. But, but was requesting time as a workshop. So I just wanted to gauge whether other folks felt that would be valuable as a workshop item sometime soon.
I, I favor it as a workshop item.
You'd be okay with that? Dan, I know you're not.
No, I think, I think a written, written response would be plenty, given all the other stuff we have to do. But you've got, there's, the majority wants a workshop, so.
Okay. Any preference, Matthew or Marty, on whether or not you'd like to go through a prioritization activity with things that have been identified for resiliency purposes or whether you just have like an update from two oh seven permaculture?
Update.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I will relay that, um, and we'll try to pick a date. It probably wouldn't be too soon, given all the budget work we have going on and other priorities we've already identified. Um, that's all I have, sorry, that was a little long, given the hour, um.
Well, this, this meeting usually goes longer.
I know it does. Yeah, this is not typical to them.
Uh, one quick question. Do you have, is there a, a list you inherited from Sandy as far as workshops?
Yes, I did have that list. Um, I was trying to find it and then go, my email inbox has gotten dense.
If you could just circulate that when you have a chance.
Yes, I will find it.
Fancy, I'm just curious what's on it. I can't, can't remember all the, all the items.
I also can't remember off the top of my head, but I do have it and I will share it.
Thank you.
Yeah, outstanding list. Um, we did all our committee stuff, right? Yeah. Um, next up was council correspondence and activities. Um, Dan, did you have anything to report?
A couple of conversations around the budget, to the election, um, but, uh, we'll get into that when we have the, the, uh, the budget workshops. I do have some questions on some of the parts of Nate's report from the department heads and some of the other things, but I can send those separately. I'll just copy you. Everybody else.
Okay, Marty, did you have anything?
I have nothing.
Matthew, I imagine you don't have, and I also don't have anything to report outside of my regular work. All right, um, next up, I believe, is the motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes, and we are adjourned at ten oh two PM. Thank you, everybody.